I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board. It is January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the time is six oh one. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording the meeting this evening? I see no responses, and I will note for the record that the members of the Select Board participating this evening are Bill Ramsey, Liz Klein, and myself, Joe Fisher. So, welcome to this wintry January meeting. The first item on our agenda is to consider approval of minutes, and we are looking at the minutes of December seventh, December ninth, and December fourteenth. I am prepared on all three. Bill, are you?
Ready to move.
And Liz?
Yes.
Then I'm prepared to accept the motion on approval of the minutes.
Make motion to approve the minutes dated December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Move consecutively. Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Approve December ninth minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated December ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Finally, December fourteenth.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes dated December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to review fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three department budget requests. And first up, we have the library, and I believe Linda Harper is here.
I am here. Thank you, Joe.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you all.
So, please give us your presentation.
Excellent. Thank you. So, thank you all for having us tonight. I do have some members of the library here, some of the trustees, the chairperson Lucy Hancock, the vice chair, David Mahegan, I think I saw. Now I have to scroll through everybody and see who else is here. Allison Malloy Hussey is here, Joan Allen, the business administrator for the library is here as well. If I'm missing any other trustees, I apologize, but I think that's mostly everybody. So, I just.
Before you proceed, I just want to make sure that you do not have a majority of trustees that would require posting.
Nope, we do not.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Very big board, so thank you for asking. So, I just want to thank you all for having us tonight. What we have here is our fiscal twenty-three budget presentation for the library. Next slide. And one of the things I want to start talking about is the mission and services for the library. So, this really explains what we do, and the mission and services are essential basically to what you can expect in the community for us to provide. We do, as those of you who have visited the library know, we do a lot of things for a lot of people, and we mean different things to many different people. Some people come to get books, some people come to continuing education, some people come just to study, some people come to meet their friends. We do, we do a lot of different things, wear a lot of different hats. So, I'll just kind of go through some of the highlights of the things that we do, and the mission and services basically drives all of our decisions. This helps guide what we focus our resources on, which are our time, our people, and our funding. So, one of the things we do is we provide physical and digital materials and services to contribute to an enhanced personal enrichment, enjoyment, and educational endeavors of all its patrons. We nurture personal growth, stimulate intellectual curiosity, and encourage lifelong learning. We encourage early childhood literacy, enable individuals of all ages to explore their community and their world through cultural, artistic, historical, and informational programs and displays. We provide service on equal terms to all individuals in the community, and we work toward the development of the individual as a citizen. We provide an open, accessible, and collaborative environment supportive of equity, diversity, and inclusion. We're a community center and destination where residents of all ages can meet to exchange ideas, discuss issues, and enjoy a nonpartisan atmosphere. And we offer a diverse collection of print, media, and electronic materials that meets our patrons' recreational and educational needs and interests by including both popular current titles and literary classics. Next slide, please. Next slide, I'm sorry. Benchmarks and metrics. So, this is very interesting. As we all know, with COVID, you know, life basically changed. We had a lot of times where people were out of the building. We're providing virtual and digital resources in ways that we have never done before. Responding to those, we find that we were able to reach out to the people in the community and still get them the things that they needed from their library. One of the things we noticed was a basically a steady increase in many of our usages, a lot online, digital, as well as physical. So, I'm going to just go over some of the, some of the interesting statistics that we have that give you a sense of how valuable the library is and all the funding that's provided, what it goes to. For example, our ebook usage, so when you go online and download an ebook, even if you can't make it to the library, the usage has increased in fiscal nineteen. It was about twenty-seven thousand, and that's the amount of times an item is checked out. In fiscal twenty, it was up to about thirty-six thousand, and by fiscal twenty-one, we had fifty-one thousand, three hundred and fifteen checkouts ebooks. Those are all done online. Our e-audio is also those downloadable audiobooks. So, you know, you used to go in, and some people still do, you get the physical discs, you put it in your CD player. A lot of people have moved to a digital format for the same thing, where you can listen to books. Doing that, again, increased from about ten thousand in fiscal nineteen to eighteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-one checkouts in fiscal twenty-one. Online virtual programs are new, as most of you know. Three years ago, had any of us heard of Zoom? Probably very, very few. And very, very few would ever imagine we would all be sitting here having this conversation right now. However, here we are. Life has changed with COVID, and some of the things we found, you know, are beneficial. One of the things is we can reach out to a lot more people online. Sometimes people have a hard time getting to the library. Some people don't want to be out driving at night when we have some night programs. We're able to reach out to a wider audience by offering some online offerings, you know, as well as our physical offerings. Our online virtual programs last year, which include things like author talks, lectures, book groups, storytimes, family events, technology classes, Zoom tutorials, which we all needed at one point or another, arts, crafts, cooking classes and programs, we offered five hundred and eighty-seven times, and we had six thousand, two hundred and forty-three attendees or viewers at those programs. So, in a time where some of us were stuck in our houses, the library offered a really good outlet and a way to still connect with other people. Next slide. So, during the pandemic, however, we were also able to physically circulate items throughout the library. So, we did a contactless holds pickup system, even when the library was closed for visits. And when we opened up, we moved to a self-checkout system to help people, help keep people physically distanced and have a safe environment for them to come to to get their books, because we know as much as the downloading stuff is good, there's nothing like a good book in your hands. I'm speaking from personal experience. Saying that, last year, we, patrons borrowed a total of a hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and eight physical items, and that's in addition to the eighty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight digital items. So, some highlights of that, over seventy-two thousand physical books circulated, about twenty-six hundred magazines, and over thirteen thousand DVDs, CDs, movies, and music. And in addition to offering all of the programs we offer, as well as the digital collections, a lot of people don't know, the library has over two hundred and sixty thousand items to borrow in the collections. That's a lot of stuff, which is why if you walk in, we have a lot of shelves and a lot of stuff on our shelves. We have a hundred and thirty-three thousand books, about thirty thousand movies and music, seventy-two thousand ebooks, twenty-two thousand downloadable audiobooks, as well as online music. We have three hundred and ninety-two magazine, newspaper, and print subscriptions, and just about eight hundred and sixty-six miscellaneous items. And this is one of the things a lot of people don't realize we do. We circulate puzzles, games, artwork, technology. You can get household gadgets, electronic devices. You can come in and check out a laptop. We try to do, we, again, try to be all things to all people. We offer a lot of items. Our physical collections and our digital collections are very robust. Next slide. Key initiatives. So, looking forward, we recently completed a library long-range plan for fiscal twenty-two to twenty-six. The long-range plan basically guides what we want to focus on in the next five years. So, the things that were identified, we did a number of community meetings, went through a whole process to try to identify what was important to the community. And the top five things that came up are as follows, the key initiatives that we want to focus our time and our efforts on. One is the improvement of the physical spaces. A lot of people use the library. They work from home at the library. They come to research. They come to do homework, quiet study. Sometimes they just come to attend a program, get education, meet a friend. There are all kinds of reasons people use the library, but it is considered that extra space besides work at home that the people in the community use. Number two is expansion of communication and marketing. Like I said, we do a lot of different things, and it's amazing when I talk to people and they say, "I didn't know you do that." And I think we need to do a better job at getting the word out of all the great things we have to offer. Number three, growth as a community resource. Again, a lot of people use the library not only to come in and do something, but to connect with other people. They connect with staff when they're there. They bump into neighbors. They participate in programs so that they can have a human connection. So, the idea of us as being that one place in the community where people of all ages, you know, from babies to students to adults to seniors, everybody can come, and it's a place for the community to come together. Number four, enhancement of collections. All those numbers I gave you of all the circulations we have of digital and physical, as well as how many items we have. That is, as they say, the bread and butter of the library. What we have greatly enhances what we can do. So, the enhancement of our collections, we always want to be forward-thinking and responsive to what the people in the community are looking for and what's going to best suit their needs and their goals. Whatever their personal goals are, we want to be there to help. Number five, development of funding sources. This really reflects upon the Board of Trustees. So, and many of you know the Board of Trustees governs the library, and they contribute substantial funds every year to the running of the library. For the books and materials, all the things we have to buy, it's, you know, not cheap, as they say. They contribute over two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars every year to the purchasing of books and materials. They also a hundred percent fund all the programs that we offer at the library. The programs are one of the things that people absolutely love to come do different things. Last year, the trustees contributed fourteen thousand dollars so that we can offer author talks and book clubs and all the great things that we do. So, given that, for instance, last year in fiscal twenty-two, the trustees contributed over two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars towards the fiscal budget, which really shows how much they put into making the mission happen and seeing the mission come alive. Doing so requires sustained funding, which, as you know, we have our annual fundraising drive. Everybody in town received our letter of insurance, and I'm sure many, many of you have contributed, to which anyone who's listening, I say a most heartfelt thank you, because all the funds that you donate to the library go to these very, very good and important causes. So, the trustees are trying to actively contribute what they can by fundraising, by finding additional fundraising sources. And one of the things I'd like to mention is there will be, and this is a save the date, on tentatively planned right now for May thirteenth, which I believe is on a Friday, a big fundraiser called Beyond the Books. We have a team of wonderful citizens who have contributed their time to plan a fundraiser for the library. So, when the time comes, I hope you all will consider attending and supporting the library in this. Next slide, please. So, for the budget for this year, for the fiscal twenty-three budget request for the library, I'll break it down. The first are salaries. So, for salaries, we're requesting one million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and two dollars. This includes thirteen full-time personnel, which many of them are our professional librarians, and twenty-one part-time personnel. So, the total, and that also includes, in addition to the twenty-one part-time personnel, we also have some pages, high school pages and college aids in those numbers. For the expenses for the library, we're requesting four hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and four hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. The expenses, the major expense items include repair and maintenance, utilities, books and materials, and the OCLN network assessment. Going over that, I can, if you'd like, go over some of the lines that have some substantial increases from last year for explanation, if the board would like me to do so. Unless there's any questions at this point.
No, Linda, please go over the substantial line items.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, for our fiscal twenty-three budget, one of the big increases for us is salaries. And one of the reasons is this is the year where our union contract had expired. So, the library, everyone except for three are in a, in a library union, and a new contract was negotiated. They looked at wage increases and equity increases that, you know, were needed when they've slipped down, when different job grades have slipped down below their peers. We found across the board, there are a number of small items to move up and a few more substantial ones. One of the substantial ones was our custodians, which I know the town had a Gov HR study done a couple of years ago, when they realized that the custodians, over time, had started to slip on the, on the equity scale with their peers. We had found the same thing with the library, so made those adjustments to the salary. For the rest of the staff, we compared to, you know, there's that twenty-town study that has comparable or benchmark communities that we compare to, and we always try to hit, you know, right in the middle at that fifty-one percentile. So, we looked at what all the other jobs were doing in all those other communities and just tried to hit right in the middle so that we were staying comparable with the workplace and what people are paying out there. So, that accounted for some of the salary increases for this year. As for the expenses, some of the bigger items are, we did have an increase in our building, which is just about a fifteen hundred dollar increase. That was because we use a three-year rolling average for building and maintenance. And over time, because our building is aging, we find some of those maintenance items cost a little more, and I think part of that may be just the cost in general have increased, materials, labor, things like that. So, there's a fifteen hundred dollar increase there, and that's just based on a three-year average. The next line is natural gas, which we had a thirty-nine hundred dollar increase, and that was rate-driven. The town gives us what the rates are being charged. We have our usage, and unfortunately, the rates went up this year, so we're paying a little more in gas. The gas is what heats the three boilers that keep the library warm. Some of the other big items are the books and supplies, I'm sorry, not books and supplies, the books and materials, and that's about a thirty-four thousand dollar increase. And the reason for that is a state aid formula. So, we receive state aid from the, from the board, Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. There is a requirement to do so that we have to expend a certain amount of money on materials acquisitions. It's our materials expenditure requirement. We use this formula, which is based on the, you know, appropriated amount that of our municipal budget. Pop it in, and we have a number that we have to hit every year in order to receive state aid. Besides the actual payments of state aid that we get, they go back into the budget. We also have the ability to apply for state grants as they come up. So, it's really an important feature that we have. The trustees, again, for the total request that we have for the town, which is a hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars, I do want to just mention that this is the line that the trustees contribute over two hundred and fifteen thousand, so that the trustees are still bearing the brunt of that one. We just asked the town to pay the difference, as the trustees have kind of stuck at the two fifteen number, given their, their ability to pay that. The other increase is for OCLN network. There's an increase of about twelve hundred dollars. This is all, again, a required amount for us to belong to the old Colony Library Network, which is a consortium of about thirty libraries. When you come into library and place a hold, and we don't have it, we can get it from another library. That's because we pay to be part of this network. It also does many things, like provides the technology infrastructure, the expertise to use all that, expertise for cataloging. So, it's how the library is really run across the board in the area. So, our total, again, total expense request is four hundred and eleven thousand dollars, four hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars, and salaries, one million, seven hundred and seventy-six oh two. So, our total requests come to two million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars for fiscal twenty-three. And with that, I'll say, do you have any questions? Anyone has any questions at this point?
Linda, thank you for the presentation, and of course, we're going to have some questions. I'll, I'm going to start with Liz, if that's okay with you, Liz?
Sure. Great. Thank you, Linda, for the presentation, and I, I know you do a lot at the library and certainly meet the needs of all our residents, all ages. So, thank you. I just had a question about the overtime. Is that increase due to the wage classification, or are you expecting more overtime hours?
No, that is a great question, and the overtime increase you see is, again, it's a contractual expense. It's part of the contract, and because the wages were increased, that's just the corollary. The overtime is mostly paid for Sundays or Sunday hours contractually, or paid at time and a half. There's no extra staffing to do that. That's just because of the equity adjustments. Then, you know, time and a half on a greater amount is a greater amount. So.
Great, great. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, thank you for that. Linda, great presentation. Thanks very much. The library is such a wonderful resource, and appreciate all you do, leading, leading, leading the library over there. You do a great job. Thank you. Two quick questions for you. You mentioned the fifteen hundred dollar building maintenance. You said that's a, that's a fee that comes up every three years?
Oh, oh, no. I, oh, I'm sorry if I misspoke. It's, it's based on a three-year rolling average. So, in other words, how we come to that number, yeah, we just figure out what we spent the last three years, average it out, and figure it's probably going to be in the same ballpark. And it's, you know, some years, we hope we don't have anything, big break, and other things, sometimes they do. So, it's a, it's a, it's a good estimate, but we just use three years and average it out.
Three years. The other question I've got for you too is, I know that the, the board voted last year to eliminate late fees on books. How much, just out of curiosity, how much revenue did that come out of your budget? I'm sure it wasn't a lot. I was kind of curious how much revenue.
No, that's a great question, and I'm going to thank you for raising it, because I made myself a note, and I missed it somehow, is to mention that we have gone fine-free for anybody who doesn't know it, so we're not charging late fees. And you're right, so that was a revenue that went into the trustee's budget that helped to pay for books and materials, which I always tell people, don't worry about paying a late fee, because it's to a good cause. Funds in late book charges in two thousand and twenty, I have the number for two thousand and twenty here, was actual, was nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-five. The year before, in fiscal nineteen, was thirty-two thousand, one fifty-seven. Over time, that number has decreased little by little, partly because people can go online, they can renew their items. We also, as a network, voted to put in an automatic renewal feature so that if you forget you have something out, and it's due, and you've opted in, it will automatically renew it. So, at the time, would avoid late fees. So, it is a little bit of a significant change for us. So, that's right now, another, you know, twenty thousand dollars the trustees are looking to raise, and that's also one of the reasons why on the, kind of our key initiatives, the increasing funding is big, because that, that revenue has to come from somewhere. So, you know, this Beyond the Books fundraiser that we're having is one of those things, well, we're not going to get, you know, the twenty thousand dollars in late fees, but maybe we can get it through some goodwill and some fundraising in other ways. So, yeah, that's, that's a loss. We have to make up somewhere.
Great. Thanks, Linda. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Great. So, this was, this was really a great presentation. I'm going to ask whoever is controlling the slides, if you can go to the, I believe it's the third page, which is actually the second page with real text on it. That's the page. So, are those pictures intended to be before and after? You come to the library, like at the top, and then after two hours there, you look like you're the person at the bottom. Was that, was that the mission? Was that the message here?
Yes, it was. He started with a picture book, but, you know, we're so good, he advanced. We just didn't realize it aged when he did it.
That's, that's, that's exactly what I expected. Then, if we could shift down to the the budget, which is, I think, the last page that we were on before. I just want to make sure I understand. Is this the budget that, is this the total library budget, or is this the portion of the budget that you are looking to have the town fund?
Oh, thank you for asking. This is the municipal budget only. So, the, the trustees actually don't formulate their fiscal twenty-three budget until May. They're on a different budget cycle than the town. So, we do the municipal part first, the trustees second. But that's when I mentioned that number, let me find it, that two hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. That's what the trustees had funded for this current fiscal year, which is in addition to the municipal budget. So, it's usually around the same, two hundred to, you know, two hundred and seventy thousand or so will be most likely budgeted by the trustees come next May in addition to this. And that's how we pay for our programs and our books and materials and a few miscellaneous things, but the bulk is for the materials and the programming. So, that's not, not included in any of the numbers you see here.
So, if we, if I was to ask what the total budget for the library is, would it be fair to take the numbers here and then add on the two hundred and seventy-one thousand, say that's the total budget for the library?
Yeah. So, in fiscal, again, because the trustees haven't done fiscal twenty-three, I can't project ahead, but I can tell you in fiscal twenty-two.
Right.
So, the town, the town budget was two million, seventy, two million, seventy-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. The trustees' budget was two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, three, two hundred and seventy-one, three eighteen, and the total budget altogether was two million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two. So, the real, the real value is that what we're asking the town to contribute isn't the whole total, that we actually need to run the library.
Right. So, what, what I'm trying to get at is, when this budget for the municipality is presented, there must be a number that the trustees have committed to so that we know that, in fact, the budget being presented to the town is adequate and appropriate for the library. So, I just want to make sure that, that there is that commitment of the, of at least the two seventy-one. So, for example, if this budget assumed, I'll make up a number, you know, two hundred thousand dollars for the trustees, in other words, seventy-one thousand less, then I would be asking why the trustee budget is, is less and more is being put on the town. So, I understand that it's not formalized until a later portion, but in order to present to the town a budget for the library, there needs to be a number that the trustees have committed to. Otherwise, how would we know if this budget is adequate?
So, that's a very good question. So, historically, and I mean historically, like, you know, for a very, very, very long time, the trustees have always contributed money, and they will always contribute. They have an endowment for which covers these expenses. They have committed in the past to contributing a minimum of two hundred and fifteen thousand. So, the exact number for books and materials, if I can find the line quickly on this spreadsheet, it's about two hundred and fifteen thousand. We have to make state aid number for materials expenditure, or the library will be decertified or can be decertified by the Massachusetts Library Commissioners, which means we wouldn't have reciprocal lending with other libraries.
Right.
It's just, we don't, we don't want to get into that situation. The trustees will always commit to making sure that we are not decertified. Um, the trustees will always commit to making sure that we are not decertified um, by contributing that two hundred and fifteen thousand. And I I know Lucy um on the call can can um confirm that. And then, you know, the the other numbers, programming, it it's, I I will make an ask to them how much I think I need for programming. And then we'll talk about it. This year, they gave me fourteen thousand dollars. If I feel we can do more programming, I'll ask for more money. The the real one that we have to hit is that two fifteen, and they are committed to that. The other asks are, you know, a little more negotiable on my part. I can certainly always get more, take use and use and spend more money from anybody. Um, we always have good things to do, but we'll find a fair number. Um, and and they are committed to use their um endowment money and their fundraising money to do so. Um, Lucy, if you're on the call, would you like to add anything from the trustees on that commitment?
Sure. Just a couple of things on that is we, we have investments. We have a manager of our investments whom, with whom we met just last week to talk about how we're doing, and we have done well the past year. We also make sure that we maintain at least two years of cash available so that we don't have to liquidate anything should we decide that the trustees need to put forth more money than expected. So we always have the ability to put forth uh a money, extra money, if for some reason there's a deficit, which does sometimes happen because we are trying to buy the books and pay the programs and pay the odd fees. So we, we have the ability, if we need to dip into the endowment, we have uh fluidity. We have cash available to cover that. And really, the things that are are being covered by the trustees are primarily the the books and the programs and some other items which are uh, in, well, the twenty-five thousand investment management fees, that's paying fees on our investments. And other things are are really minor compared to what we're going uh to have paid by the town. Does that help?
Yeah, that that definitely helps. Um, but just, just so I'm clear, the trustees are not covering the books. The town is being asked for a hundred and ten thousand on the books.
That the amount that the town is paying for the books will fluctuate year to year because I'm not sure, years ago, that the trustees agreed that, and the town agreed, the trustees would freeze the amount that the trustees were paying for the books. Linda, what is the amount we've froze of that? Is it the one we've got on the SO, on the source of funds?
It is. It's that two fifteen um, two, two hundred fifteen thousand five hundred.
Right. So given that the town population is increasing, and given the way the formula works with the materials expense requirements, we expect that um the number that the town is putting forth will go up year after year unless our fundraising initiatives, which we're hoping to be successful with, are successful this year, next year, or the year after, and the trustees have enough additional income to put toward the books.
Yes, that that would, that would be great. And we are looking forward to a successful fundraiser for the library. Um, let me ask, and I didn't see anything in the materials in terms of grant applications, whether the library applies for grants, are there? And is there anything that the town can do to help in terms of eligibility or just assistance there?
Um, thank you for asking. So, um, yes, last year with COVID was kind of a, an odd year, and I think we we weren't really doing a lot of the normal things we do. But in past, yes, we have used that, um, because we are, you know, qualified through state aid to apply. We have applied for a number of grants in the past. Um, so we get those as they come up. Um, one of the, you know, one of the last ones we did was we conserve the Governor Long letters that we have in our historical collection. We hired a conservador, um, did that, digitized them. So projects like that come along. We identify what they are and we apply for grants um as they come up. So we definitely do. And um, I know Tom Mayo's always been great saying if there's you know, anything he can do to help, um, we certainly will reach out. Um, we just kinda keep an eye on which opportunities are coming up and which which grants are coming up.
Is is there anything in the budget to account for any grants that you have already received or are expecting to receive?
Um, right now, we haven't applied for any specific grants for this coming year. Um, when we do, um, I'm looking, it's usually it, it, you know, the the money comes in, but we spend the money. So it's not, it's not a revenue source. I mean, we'll show it on our source of funds for um that we keep for the trustees. Um, but if we get a third, like the Governor Long, we get like a thirty thousand dollar grant. It comes in, but then we spend it down to zero. So it's, it's not, it's not money we keep, it's money we spend to do something with.
Got it. Um, let me go back to the question that Liz asked about overtime. Uh, is there anything that can be done to manage that expense?
Um, really, if we wanted to manage it, that would be cutting back on Sunday hours. And um, I wouldn't recommend it because I think Sunday is one of the days that our patrons really enjoy coming in because it's not a workday. People aren't rushed cuz on Saturdays, people with families are rushing to field to field. Um, it it's a very relaxing day at the library. And if kids have projects or put off their homework, they come in to get caught up before it starts on Monday. Um, we we had extended our our Sunday season um, all the way. So we run right now from September through June. So it covers the entire school season um, off on, you know, July and August. Um, you know, I remember a time, you know, I've been with the library for a long time, when the season wasn't that long. Um, it would run later, you know, would open maybe in October, would close in April or May. And patrons weren't happy that we weren't open on Sundays. So, I mean, there are ways to save money. It's, but there's a cost. And and I I wouldn't recommend it. Um, I wouldn't recommend it.
No, I'm I'm certainly not looking to curtail uh Sunday hours, but I know when we've spoken to other departments, they have looked at ways to address overtime. I didn't know if there were those options here.
We work with a pretty much a skeleton crew already. Um, we work less than our normal load on um on Saturday or during the weekday. So we have people stationed just at the places, as you've seen in the building, anyone who's been in. It's a very spread out building, so we have to have a person here, a person here, and a person here. So we have the the minimal amount we need. Um, and we usually have a couple of the high school kids come and help us on Sundays, which gives us an extra body at a little bit lower uh of a price point. Um, although what they do is amazing. So that's, you know, they they deserve twice as much. But um so we couldn't cut down. The other question, I think that the other thing is, well, are we overstaffed? Can we cut down? But we're already kind of the about bare bones on Sunday, so we can just open the doors and run it.
To to what extent do you take advantage of volunteers? For example, I know the senior center does a lot of work with volunteers. And to the extent you do, please say so that we, so we can thank and acknowledge them.
Yes, I I thank you for for mentioning that absolutely positively. Um, I know, again, during COVID, without having a lot of people in the building, things were a little different. I know a lot of our volunteers have started coming back or itching to get back um when it's safe to do so. We have about a hundred volunteers who help the library every year, and they put in over five thousand hours. It's the equivalent to, I believe, two and a half um full-time equivalent workers. Um, they do everything from helping to mend the books that are broken, to shelve the books, to, you know, if you put a book on hold, they might be the one going to the shelf to get it. Um, we also have volunteers who participate in the home delivery service. So for anyone who's at home and can't get to the library, you know, kind of shut-ins, people who can't drive, we have a a system of volunteers who will go and bring books to their house and pick them up again. Um, we have um volunteers who work in the bookstore. And I know the bookstore is, you know, one of the last independent bookstores in in town, as they say. Um, we have a used bookstore on site. Um, that's currently being remodeled, but we hope to open it within the next month or two, run by a very dedicated bunch of of volun- volunteers. I I can mention specifically Adrian Richardson and and Marcia Sinclair have been in and working like crazy to get it up and up and running. Um, and they sell used books, and the revenues for that go into the trustees' budget, one of those small line items that help to, you know, um, put some revenues in, especially since we're not collecting fines. Um, so yes, they do everything, and the library could not run without them. So, um, you know, I would just say, we, a big thank you to all our volunteers. They are special people. They are part of the library family, and and we couldn't do what we do without them. So we value them every day.
Thank you. Uh, and thank you to the, to the volunteers. I did not see in your report, um, and I'm curious to know to what extent folks are still coming into the library for Wi-Fi usage. Uh, often, you know, the Wi-Fi available at the library is superior to what may be available to certain people at their homes.
Yes, it it absolutely is. And you know, I don't have the number on the top of my hand. I can tell you the last time I looked, it was over a hundred and fifty-five thousand connections to the Wi-Fi in a fiscal year. I know that number is now higher. Um, and um, and also, on that note, I know we're gonna work with, we are working with um Bill Hartigan, his town um IT um director to replace our Wi-Fi and upgrade it. So we have, it is, it is heavily used. We're gonna improve the system even more. But yeah, that's one of those things. People come to the library for connection. They they come to the plug-in their own devices. You know, there was a time when people came to use the computers at the library, and that is still true. But to a much greater extent, people are just on their phone. They come through, they connect, they have Wi-Fi. And a lot of people, especially with COVID, started working from home, but it's hard when the dog's barking and the kids are running around. So someone would would leave and come to the library and then have a quiet space to work and then hop on the Wi-Fi. Um, you know, never mind, you know, kids doing their research. So it is, yeah, thank you for asking. Heavily used um and really important.
Um, so two two other matters, and I'm not gonna ask. In fact, I'm just gonna mention it and then turn it over to the public. But there's really, I think, a tremendous synergy that the library has with both the senior center and the schools. Uh, so thank you, thank you for for providing uh access for uh for those two groups. And now I'm gonna turn to members of the public, if anyone has comments or questions on the library's proposed budget. Seeing none. Linda, thank you again for your, for your time, for your dedication, and for making the library a success. And I know it's not just you. Uh, but you're leading a great team, and the trustees uh are really doing their part. So we thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, I'm gonna turn to the Recreation Department uh budget request and Mark Thorell.
Thank you, Joe. And I'm just quickly mentioning that Vicki Donlin, the Chair of the Rec Commission, is here with us uh tonight as well. Um, thank you for inviting us here tonight to review the Rec Department's FY twenty twenty-three budget. Our operating budget consists of two items, the Director's salary and the new townwide turf maintenance plan. Most of our self-supporting fiscal operations happens within a revolving fund budget. Our scope of programs helps bring in revenue, which in turns pay for all the department's expenses and payroll. Our mission and scope of services include the following. With regards to programming, we manage a comprehensive range of over two hundred self-funded recreational programs for all generations. Just to highlight a few of our larger programs, so you can get a sense of our curriculum. With the adult population, some programs include tennis, pickleball, dance cardio, harbor hoops, spinning, yoga, zumba, and golf. We also offer a commercial-grade fitness room that is open seven days per week. Free memberships are provided to any Hingham resident seventy-five years or older. Our children's program consists of a dance program that averages over six hundred and fifty dancers. We have three hundred and children enrolled in in kid kicker soccer, two hundred children in tennis, two hundred girls in field hockey, and over a hundred children in our track and field program. We offer seven different summer camps, which enrolled thirty-three hundred children in summer two thousand twenty-one. We employ about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five seasonal staff members to have these popular programs properly staffed. The camps include offerings for three to thirteen-year-olds. We added two additional camps for summer two thousand twenty-one. Parkland was offered for eight to twelve-year-olds. This camp took advantage of Hingham's beautiful parklands, which included exploring Wampatuck, Bear Cove, Hingham Harbor, and World's End. This program was a hit as it filled every week that it was offered. We plan on expanding this program for summer two thousand twenty-two. Adventure Club was a new camp offered to fourth and fifth graders. We realized our enrollment numbers were decreasing for this age group in that we needed to offer something that appealed to this age bracket. This camp includes three field trips per week, which include but not limited to kayaking in Hingham Harbor, visiting Nantasket Beach, rock climbing, paintballing, and trampoline parks. Over eight hundred and fifty teens participated in our Teen Extreme Program, which takes four field trips per week at some of the most extreme parks in New England. The teens traveled to Six Flags, Water Country, Canopy Lake Park, the Godzilla Speedboat in Boston Harbor, and Treetop Climbing Adventures. This is just a few of the two thousand twenty-one Teen Extreme trips. Uh, the next slide, please. With the new townwide athletic field and court plan, Hingham Rec now permits and schedules all town fields and courts. This consists of thirty-seven fields at sixteen locations, twenty-eight tennis courts at six locations, and ten basketball courts at seven locations. Every permit from every sport organization is scheduled and uploaded into our comprehensive rec software, where the public has the ability to view open time slots at every field. This has helped create efficiency and transparency to the permitting and scheduling process. The Rec Department also manages and oversees the athletic field turf maintenance for all town athletic fields, which consist of sixty-eight acres. For FY two thousand twenty-two, the newly funded budget in total was three hundred and eighty-one thousand. Two hundred and forty-one thousand was funded by the town. Forty thousand was transferred from the school's budget to the turf maintenance budget, and a hundred thousand dollars was collected in user fees. The new turf maintenance budget was the result of a total team effort, both from the sports community and town officials. It took buy-in from every sports organization to to agree to a whole new fee structure, which resulted in higher rates. Everyone across the board was cooperative, understanding, and and flexible. Um, the next slide, please. Um, managing the town's athletic field turf maintenance consists of scheduling and oversight of field applications, irrigation, utilities, infield groomings, and renovations, seating, top dressing, aerating, and a variety other of other field services. We have hired several athletic field staff members who have taken great pride in grooming baseball and softball infields. The turf maintenance program has been well-received by the sports community, and we are really confident that we will be able to continue to improve the overall playing conditions at the fields townwide. Uh, next slide, please. I wanted to share the positive results that the town has seen in just six months. A picture of Cronin Field has been provided to illustrate the field improvements. You can see the quality of turf in the beautifully maintained infield. The work and impact of the turf maintenance budget did not go unnoticed. As the President of Hingham Little League noted in his email, he was very pleased with the improved field conditions. Next slide. Here is a picture of Haley Field and Lynch Field. New infield mix was installed. Baselines were edged in the home play area. Pitcher's mounds were rebuilt to proper size and specs. Um, next slide, please. Um, here's a picture of Foster and South Schools. You can see the dramatic difference between the before and after pictures. Both infields were fully grown in with vegetation. This was removed and the infield was completely groomed and edged out. This is a work in progress as some of the vegetation has grown back. But once again, in the spring, we will remove it for the season. Next slide, please. More before and after pictures at Hingham High School. It is important to note that the town has partnered with a professional firm who has been extremely responsive, professional, and has performed nothing but quality work, as we can see from these pictures. Um, next slide. This graph represents that, other than the Director's salary, our department is self-funded. One statistic we take pride in is that we offer summer camps from the day Hingham's children end their school year all the way up until the weekend before the their start of their new school year. Many comparative towns offer six or eight weeks of summer camps. In summer two thousand twenty-one, we offered eleven weeks. Next slide, please. A few of our key initiatives include helping the South Shore Country Club with their potential future pool project in any way we can. We also hope to improve accessibility at athletic fields, courts, and playgrounds. And finally, we hope to work with the schools and Board of Selectmen's Office to identify and create a town-wide capital priority list. Um, next slide, please. The Rex total salaries is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and The Rex total salaries is 189,908, which consists of the Director's Salary and the payroll for the turf maintenance staff. Our three other full-time administrators are fully funded by the revolving fund. The Rec Commission and I are so fortunate to have such dedicated and hard-working administrative team. We have three full-time administrators who are extremely efficient and motivated to serve the residents of Hingham. We have an additional 12 summer administrators who help us manage all of the seasonal employees. Our admin team excels at successfully marketing, growing, and managing very large and complex recreational offerings. We are incredibly lucky to attract some of the hardest-working, brightest, and dedicated counselors and lifeguards. We typically select 100 to 125 counselors and lifeguards to cover the summertime needs. Um, and then the total expenses for the town's turf maintenance plan is 181,319. And all other department expenses are self-funded from the revolving fund. Um, and then the final slide. Um, an additional funding request of $27,600 represents a spring and fall cleanup at all athletic fields. The two, the new townwide turf maintenance budget does not include seasonal landscaping at athletic fields in the parking lots connected to the fields. This work would include cutting back brush from the fence lines and parking lots, de-weeding mulch beds and parking lots, removal of brush and weeds from backstops, dugouts, and bleachers. Over the years, some fields have been so overgrown with brush that team softball benches cannot be used. An example of this would be over at Foster School. The 27,600 would truly go a long way in helping to maintain and clean up up fields in the parking lots that are associated with each field. We appreciate your time tonight and and thank you for your support and certainly open it up to any questions.
Well, Mark, thank you for a thorough report and and thank you for all the work that you and your team do. Uh, before going for questions, I was going to ask Vicky if there's anything she wanted to add.
Um, there we go. I just want to say, thank you. I just want to say, you know, how honored and proud I am to work every day with Mark, who understands and has the energy to to keep taking the assets we have in Hingham and making them better. Uh, you know, we're really got a program that is working now. And as a 50-year resident of Hingham, I'm just thrilled and honored that we're getting to this point. So thank you very much for the support from the Board of Selectmen in the town.
Great, thank you. Liz, questions?
Yes, thank you, Mark, for the presentation, and thank you for all that you do, and as well as the rest of the Rec Department and Rec Commission. Um, the way you've been able to be so creative with the summer, enhancing and adding summer programming during COVID is is has been amazing. Um, and I know those, that Parkland session was was always sold out and so popular. It's a great addition to utilize what we have here in Hingham. Um, and just to see how many, how many students are enrolled in the summer programs is great. Um, and I know we've had a lot of discussions about the fields, um, and they've never looked better. So thank you. I know it hasn't been easy, but it's, the hard work is certainly paying off. Um, so thank you. Um, just a question about the additional request. Is that, um, is that included in the line item for the field maintenance? Because that looks like it went up by like 10,000, might maybe.
That would, that 10,000 is is more about just keeping up with inflation and and uh costs rising.
Okay, so that's level services.
To to maintain the level services.
Got it.
This 27,000 would be over and above of that.
Okay, got it. Um, and then the the wages went up a little too. I'm assuming that's just level services as well, right, with the new wage classification?
Yes, step increase in wage classification, correct.
Okay, great, great, thank you. Um, okay, that's that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill.
I thank you. I'm going to abstain on this budget in police tonight. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so, Mark, I just have one question. It's, I hopefully, it's an easy question. I looked at all the pictures that you showed, and it looked like they were all baseball fields. You do more than baseball fields. I mean, uh, in particular, uh, I mean, my, my son was a soccer goalie, so I'm concerned about the soccer soccer fields. They were also included. Um, and and I know that you're, you know, you you made a big effort for all the fields in in the town with respect to, uh, you know, maintenance. So, um, thank you. I just want to make sure that you're not just limited to the baseball fields.
Yeah, no, that that's a good point. I realized that they are all baseball and softball fields. Um, just as much attention was paid for all the rectangular field space, whether it was soccer or lacrosse or football. Um, all those fields were, um, aerated multiple times, sliced seeded, um, and really, uh, uh, multiple fertilization. So th- those fields were given just as much love as the other fields.
I'm glad to see you're sharing the love. Thank you. Do any members of the public have comments or questions? I am seeing none.
Carlos da Silva might have a.
Oh, um, yeah, I don't see him on the screen, but Carlos, if you've got a question, uh.
Just a comment, just a comment. Uh, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Uh, Mark, Vicky, and all the volunteers at the Rec. Um, I wanted to echo what everyone had already said. Thank you so much for the great work that you've been doing. I, for one, uh, for many years, have been saying that once we centralize the operations, um, you know, and management of the fields, that would definitely improve. That's exactly what our students, our youth needs, is more outdoor space. So perhaps they cannot, uh, they will avoid being home, playing games, and, uh, be out there and appreciate the environment. So, uh, I just wanted to, you know, say thank you very much for everything that you guys are doing, and I support your budget 100%. Thank you.
So before you, before you go mute, Carlos, I I was negligent to members of the public who are participating. We asked them to just give their their address for the record.
I should have known better. Carlos da Silva, Five Tarasi Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So Mark and Vicky, thank you again. And we are prepared to move on to the next budget, which is the Animal Control Budget.
Thank you.
I believe we have Leslie Badger here.
I'm here. Hi. How you doing?
We're doing well.
Thank you so much for having me tonight.
We're looking forward to hearing from you.
Yes, so I will go ahead and start my presentation. Um, as most of you know, I'm the Animal Control Officer, and my duties and responsibilities are for um, helping with all the animals in town, including those that are injured and sick and deceased. And also, as the Animal Control Officer, I help with, um, finding any animals that are loose and, uh, missing and trying to reunite them with their owners. I'm also in charge of helping assisting with any issues that come up with livestock, wildlife, and marine mammals, um, as our town is very diverse with the animals that we do have. Um, I'm also in charge of, um, monitoring our coyote program, which goes hand in hand with helping with the wildlife situation, um, that we have in town. I also am in in charge of the Bear Cove Park, uh, monitoring for the off-leash program. Um, I help with the, with various departments, as in, um, I help with the hoarding task force. I help on the, um, the, uh, Senior Center with any of the elderly that might have issues with their pets. And then I also have the funds, and I work hand in hand quite a bit with the Veterans Department. And we have, uh, that fund that's called Vets and Pets, and we help any, uh, veterans that are in town uh, with their pets, including our, um, homeless veterans shelter or, um, home. Um, over on Fort Hill Street, we still have a veteran and his, uh, dog that are living over there that I help with regularly. Um, also, I am the Animal Inspector for the Town of Hingham, which that, um, go, again, goes hand in hand with helping another department, the Town Clerk, with the licensing. Um, and I also help the Board of Health, uh, with, if there's any issues with, uh, dog bites. I take care of all the, um, dog bites that occur in town. I'm also in charge, which is doing quarantines. I'm also in charge of checking barns and kennels for the Board of Health. Um, and then if you move on to the next slide with the pictures, um, I put in some pictures of this last year. We had a very famous guest that came through Hingham in our upper right-hand corner. That was Boo Boo the Bear. He made his way all over South Shore, um, but didn't make a stop in Hingham. Uh, we also had a, uh, four-foot iguana that showed up in the Hull DPW, um, one of their pickup trucks in the engine compartment, and I was able to get that out. It made the news as well. And, uh, it was cared for at the Wildlife Center and then found a home. Um, so it's now living a great iguana life, um, away from any pickup trucks. And, um, also in the upper-left corner, part of my, uh, coyote program. This is a great picture that I've added to it. This is a our-old newborn baby coyote that many people may not be aware of. A resident found it, thought it was a puppy, um, but we quickly realized it was a coyote pup. Um, so I still very much, uh, work on the coyote issue here in town. I can say knock on wood that so far it's been a somewhat, um, quiet coyote situation. They're definitely still here, but they haven't been as prominent as they have been in years past, uh, which is a good thing. But I still offer education. I still check in with residents that would see them in their neighborhoods regularly to see how they're doing. And I offer, uh, programs to them if they still want me to get together with their neighbors in a safe, uh, way with COVID, uh, to discuss what they can do, uh, as a neighborhood. Also, as outreach for the animal control, I also, um, handle, um, or I enjoy, uh, still with following COVID product protocol, um, reaching out and working with the, um, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, uh, 4-H Clubs, uh, and then the schools as well. Um, I've been starting to, uh, do different programs with the schools as well regarding, uh, different animal topics. Um, and then we can go to the slide for my benchmarks. And, um, as you can see, I had over, um, 253 calls. And you'll see there's a divide, and that's because, um, I actually, this last year, a year ago, January, um, the tri-town ACO who covered Cohasset, Norwell, and Hull, he had left his position and moved to Waymouth. And I ended up taking over and covering for Cohasset and, uh, Hull and Norwell from January to August, when Cohasset Norwell found a new ACO. And then as of this week, Hull found an ACO to take over. So I had been covering Hull up until presently this week, but they have, um, since found, uh, an ACO, to take that position. I also, uh, provide coverage, because if I go away, I have the fellow ACOS help me. But I also provided coverage throughout this year for, uh, the towns of Rockland, Abington, Hanover, and Pembroke. Um, and then if we have a larger-scale situation in any of the other towns, I may go further out if they needed, uh, more ACOS to help with the specific, uh, emergency situation. Um, I had, due to COVID, things have been a little bit quieter. I had two citations, 35 quarantines, 103 loose dogs, uh, 16 barn inspections, and five kennels. Uh, my key initiatives are as, um, on my, um, excuse me, um, my key initiatives, they are for, as always, promoting the dog licensing program, um, continuing to educate people on the wildlife here in Hingham, um, making sure that the Bear Cove Program, which has been, uh, again, knock on wood, running smoothly. Um, it continues to run smoothly. Um, and then work on updating my animal control truck and the equipment that I have, um, because I will be needing a new animal control truck, uh, which we, in the near future, will be time for it to retire and, uh, go into a trade-in process. Um, and then I would like to continue to do a lot of community outreach programs, as long as they're COVID-safe. Um, and then offer to get the HPD and the, um, HFD involved in some of our bigger kennels and barns, so they can get used to, if we have any emergencies, what it's like going into those barns and around animals that they may not be around, um, on a regular basis. So those are some of the key initiatives that I want to continue to work with, uh, or or do as the Animal Control Officer going forward. Um, I'm also, which is for me this year, uh, it started at the end of last year into this year. I'm also working, um, in completing the new Police Reform Bridge Academy. So that's another thing that I am also doing, um, presently, that will take up until, I I'm hoping to get done by the latest, absolute latest, end of February, March, beginning of March. But, um, we have until the end of June to complete that academy. So those are all the things that I am working on presently as the Animal Control Officer or have done. Um, and then down to my, my staff and and expenses. Um, it all comes, my salary comes out to 75,696, and that is for one full-time Animal Control Officer. And then the as-needed part-time position, which is usually something in the summer that, um, we usually need more of, um, with the bear, helping with Bear Cove, because I usually end up with a lot more calls. And we have, um, we already have a lot of assistance that will come in through the Harbor Masters Office. So I'm able to utilize, um, quite a few of the assistance there to help me with my position. My expenses are usually roughly about the same, um, as they've been, 6,200. Um, I don't have any foreseen big expenses coming up. Um, but I I I do know that, uh, as I mentioned before, my truck will be due, um, in the future for a trade-in, so that would be a considerable expense in the future. But other than that, everything is pretty much status quo for me, in my department. And I do want to finally say thank you so much to my Chief and Deputy Number One for, um, always being supportive of me, always being there to to help me with whatever I need, um, along with all the officers in the department. I also wanted to thank the Select Board, and I want to thank the town, um, for always trusting in me and, um, allowing me to help them with whatever their animal issues are.
So Les, let's say thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to turn this over, uh, first to, uh, Liz, but before I do, I have a question for Tom, uh, which concerns the truck. Is is that on our list of, uh, for our capital outlay in the future? Um, I just want to make sure that that's something that's in future budgets.
Yeah, I I believe it is in for, uh, for either next year or the following year. I got run up by the chief, but I believe that's on the schedule.
Great. Liz.
Thank you, Leslie, for the presentation, and thank you for all you do. It's an invaluable service. I don't know how you're going to keep up with the social media page, because you're a celebrity in town, but um, so that could be a full-time job, but, uh, in all seriousness, thank you for everything you do. Um, I don't have any questions about this year's budget. I was going to ask about the timeline for the truck. Um, but it it sounds like we have that either next, next year or the following year.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, can you participate in this?
I can, yes. Uh, Leslie, uh, you know, you you thanked us, but you know, the thanks goes to you, um, for the great work you do, and, um, particularly, you're just so responsive to residents, um, on social media and with all their concern. So we're we're very lucky to have you and want to thank, you know, want to thank you for all that you do for our town. So, um, I have no question about your budget. It's very straightforward. It's very similar to what it was last year. I do have one quick question for you, though. You mentioned it. Um, you know, the coyote issue in town is always a concern for residents with with small children and you know, we'd have so many dogs and cats in town. Um, I'm happy to hear that you you said the coyote issue was kind of abated a little bit. What do you attribute to that, if you know?
I think, um, first and foremost, I think because the residents are doing a really great job on trying to be uh, really good about keeping food sources down. So I think that's one of the the things. And two, I also, because I keep an eye on what's happening in the I think that's one of the, the things and two, I also, because I keep an eye on what's happening in the other towns and I noticed that Cohasset seemed to have, and I obviously was covering for them for the majority of this year too, they were having a lot of calls for coyotes. So sometimes when that food source becomes scarce in one town, they'll move to another town. So I'm also thinking that that could be part of it too, that they realized they weren't getting as much food here and they were making their way to another spot. It could also be that activity has, outside activities have picked up a lot more, so they want a quieter spot. So Cohasset could have been a lot quieter than, than Hangum. I know that they're still here, but they seem to be a lot, a lot quieter, not making their presence as known as they did this last year in Cohasset.
Great. Well, thanks for all you do, Leslie. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Joe, can I just jump in? I just want to clarify my answer earlier. You had asked about the truck and Liz, I just, I was just told that it's actually on the FY23 request list. Capital Outlay is evaluating, which means like everything on the Capital Outlay Request List is subject to slipping to next year or the following year. But it is on the FY23 capital list for this year.
Right. So most importantly, it is on our radar and it's something that we're looking at.
Yes.
And Leslie, just, just picking up on Bill's comment on, on the coyotes. I remember in past years, you were, I think before the Select Board and elsewhere, making it clear the sort of the protocols that residents should follow, both to avoid attracting coyotes as well as what to do when there is one on, on the driveway. So is there, is there a website? Is there something? So if people either need a refresher? Or just where do they go to get that information from you? Because I agree, it's been very effective.
That's a great question. They can go right to my animal control website, which can be found on the Town of Hangum page or the Hangum Police Department page. And they will find links for both what to do with coyotes. The link for the video that I made with the Environmental Police and the New England Wildlife Veterinarian and fellow ACOs. When I did the presentation at the library, that link should be up there as well with a bunch of other added information too.
Great, because I think you really have been very effective.
Thank you.
And Cohasset doesn't thank you, but we thank you because
Thank you. Well, they know I'm a great ACO too, so.
Are there members of the public with questions for our Animal Control Officer?
That's a good idea, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again, Leslie. It was
Absolutely.
Great.
Have a great night. Thank you.
So from coyotes, we're gonna go to the, to the waterways with Ken Corson to present the Harbor Master Budget Request.
Great. Thank you for having me this evening. I was thinking today, this is probably about my fifteenth budget presentation, so I'm getting up in the years here. They're all just as, as interesting. We go to the next slide. Here we go. So the Harbor Masters Office is a division of the Police Department and I like to break it up into three aspects. We have what everyone's familiar with, the public safety aspect where we protect the harbor, our life and property of the people. We educate people and enforce the laws. We also provide a lot of harbor management aspects. We issue warrant permits. That's where we manage the boats and the moorings. That's the, the mooring management aspect. We also every ten years oversee the large dredging operation in the inner harbor. It occurs every ten years, but there's a bunch of years that we have planning and management that lead up to the dredging. This year, we're gonna be, the state's gonna be replacing the boat ramp at the inner harbor and, and hopefully there'll be some new docks alongside of it also. We have five harbors, five islands in the harbor, of which I'm also the custodian of those islands. We have numerous transient mooring rentals throughout the harbor. We have a pump-out boat that goes through the harbor every couple of days and pumps out boats, takes the waste off the boat. And we have a pump-out station at town here that the boats can come in and use to, to remove waste from their boat. We also have camping on Langley Island that we as a town manage through my office. And then there's shell fishing that occurs in town. We haven't really had much shell fishing since 2016 because the shellfish population has died off due to a, a disease, but over the last year, we've seen the shellfish population come back quite a bit and the shellfish diggers have been digging the last three months or four months. And it looks like they're gonna be here throughout the next year. So shell fishing seems to be back and through the shellfish are thriving in Hangum. So those are kind of the three areas that I like to divide our department up into so people can see the different the main, the main areas of the, of the things that we do for the community. Next slide, please. When people think of Hangum Harbor, they typically think of their area of the water down by the rotary. So if you look at this chart here, there's it's kind of hard to see, but there's a letter A down in the, kind of the middle there. So that's down by the rotary. You look out and you see the island. So that's what most people think of as Hangum Harbor, but Hangum Harbor is actually much larger than that. You can see the four islands right off the rotary there. And it goes out to a much larger island. That's Bumpkin Island. And as you go to the left, that goes down towards the Back River where the shipyard is and then over to the right where Area C is, that's World's End. So Hangum Harbor is not just the inner harbor there where we think of at the rotary, but it's much, much larger than that. All the way up to Bumpkin Island, down to the George Washington Bridge up in that area and then over to the shipyard up through the, that passed the Three A Bridge up there. So it's a large, large harbor with a lot of water and a lot of boating activity that occurs throughout the summer, spring and fall. Next slide, please. This past year, we had over six hundred log entries for calls for service. Of those six hundred log entries, we kind of break them down. There are roughly approximately a hundred and ninety calls for patrol calls for service. And when we break those a hundred and ninety down, there were fifty larger incidents. And we've kind of listed out those approximately fifty larger incidents. You can see some accident, vessel accidents, groundings, disabled or vessels adrift, mutual aids to other towns, a stolen boat. We had four medical calls, thirteen sinking or capsized boats. So we do have a fair number of calls. And it's important to note that when we get a call in the water, it's not, it's not, sometimes they're short. They could be you know, fifteen or twenty minutes, but an average call could be an hour, an hour and a half. And sometimes they can be much longer than that. We did have a report of a swimmer that went missing, which I'm sure people remember this summer. That went missing at the, at the, at the bathing beach and it was a, it was a credible, credible party making the report. And it had to be investigated further and that took several hours to to search the waterway and also investigate on land to try to locate the swimmer. We didn't believe that the swimmer was missing, but we had to make every effort to try to find them both in the water and on land before we could terminate that. And that took several hours. I think it was about four and a half hours. So one call takes, can take quite a bit of time from the time we receive the call to the time we, we clear from that call. And then there's just a couple images there here of, you know, there's a sailboat aground. The one to the right of that is actually the engine on that boat basically came off and when the boat was off, being operated and it's upside down there in the water. And then the one beneath that is a boat that was taking on some water. Next slide, please. One of the harbor management jobs that we do is the, the pump-out boat, which is a very popular, very popular service. And like I said, that removes the the human waste from, from people's boats and it brings it into shore and offloads it. So we did four hundred and seventy-seven hours of pump-out services this past season. Over ten thousand gallons of waste was removed from about four hundred and fifty-five boats. As you can see, the numbers for twenty twenty-one were much higher. It was a clearly there was a big dip there in twenty twenty because we had some challenges with operating that boat in twenty twenty, but it's, it's rose higher than any of the previous years. So it's, it's a service that's well received by the community and the visiting boaters and we're able to provide that to everyone that's, that needs it. Next slide, please. Moring management is kind of a silent thing that we do and people don't really, really see it. But it, it's something that we're continuously doing. We have five mooring areas and each of these mooring areas has X number of of moorings within them. So the five moorings here is the inner harbor, outer harbor, World's End, Back River. And then we have the Hewitt's Cove area. And each mooring area is an engineered mooring field. And the location of each mooring is, is quite precise and has to be located within three feet of its GPS position. And each mooring has a precise swing with a certain amount of chain. And as you can see in the, in the, the chart on the right there, we have a boat with a, with a precise amount of chain to a fixed anchor point. And this is how we engineer all our fields. So we know exactly how many moorings are out there, where they are, and we assign people from a waiting list to the specific spots. And we do that so that there's a fair and equitable assignment to locations. And then we know where the boats are located. And we can make sure that the boats are on their proper location for enforcement purposes. And if there's a problem with a, a boat, someone has an issue and they say they're on a mooring number, we know exactly where they are. We can, we can locate them quickly and provide them with the assistance that they need. This past year, we had a hundred and eighty-six transient boaters come into town. Some of them were multi-day. Next slide. This is just kind of a ten-year look back on revenues. I just provide it kind of for historic reference. The revenues are, you know, they go up every so often due to rate increases, but we also work diligently to go out and inspect the mooring fields and slips to make sure that the boaters are getting their mooring permits, which is somewhat of a task because you know, we, we can look online and we can see you know, in the mooring fields, we can see what locations don't have a permit and we can go check it, but when we get into the slips at the marinas, we actually have to go out there and, and check each location to see if there's a if there's a boat there and to make sure that they have a permit. So that's somewhat more labor intensive. And you know, you'll see if you look through this, you'll see there were years where, you know, shell fishing, there was no shell fishing. So there were no revenues and, and fines from year to year go up and down depending upon activities and so forth. Next slide, please. This is just kind of a, a visual of the revenues. Again, going from year to year, we have moorings. You'll notice for transients, the revenues, there was a, a large spike in revenues for twenty twenty-one. And that's, that was because we had a lot of, we had a fair number of people visiting the inner harbor for weeks at a time. Where we used to only get people renting the transient moorings for a night here and a night there, but we had people actually coming in and renting our transient moorings to the inner harbor for most of the summer, they were actually rented. And I think that's partly because with the large increase in people taking to boating, there's not many moorings and slips available, so people realize that they could spend the time on our transient moorings to the inner harbor. So that was part of that large spike in the transient rental increase right there. But revenues are pretty consistent and just steadily rise over time. Next slide, please. So for our key initiative, we've been working with the Harbor Development Committee on the, the Town Worth Improvement Project. I've been working, it's been about fifteen years now for the Boat Ramp Replacement Project, which the state is actually working to, it's been put out to bid and the contractor is gonna be starting in the next couple of weeks to replace the boat ramp in the in the inner harbor. We have a, we were awarded the Port Security Grant in twenty twenty. Marine Two, which was procured just about a year ago, is completely built. That's pictured in the lower right corner of the screen here. That will be shipping in the next couple of weeks and we'll be receiving that. So that'll be launching for next spring. And we received this past fall, another port security grant or rehab marine one, which is about twelve or thirteen years old now. It's gonna that'll go out next fall for a rehab. It'll get new engines, electronics. It'll be brought up to today's standard. That's about a three hundred thousand dollar grant, so we're excited about that. A couple other initiatives that aren't on here that we're working on. We're working with the, the MBTA at the ferry pier in the shipyard to try to secure some, some space on their new dock, their potential new dock there where we could put some jet docks to keep our boats. A couple advantages if we can keep these, if we get these jet docks and keep, keep it on their, their pier is that we wouldn't have to bottom paint our, the bottoms of the boats anymore, which the anti-fouling paint is ablative. It, it comes off as you operate the boats, where it kind of pollutes the, the waters. We'd be able to get away from the expense of having to paint the bottom and the adverse effects that has in the water, but also in the long run, we'd be able to not have to pay the, the slip fees at the shipyard from year to year. So that would be about a ten thousand dollar savings in the long run. So there's some, some significant advantages to having these jet docks. We're working with the, the T on that. And again, with the, the increase in, in shellfish, that's becoming that's something we haven't budgeted the last couple of years and really haven't done much with. So as we see a strong increase in, in the shellfish population and the need for harvesting and, and, and management of that, I think in the next year or so, we'll see some, some initiatives around shellfish taking place. So those are the key initiatives that we're working on right now. Next slide, please. Salaries, there's a little bit of increase in salaries this year. Mainly that's due to step increases due to just the standard step increase that, that's in place with the, the salary schedules. Expenses, we do have a fairly robust expense schedule here. I mean, you know, fuel. You know, it does take fuel to run the boats. There's no electric engines right now that we can use for, for commercial grade boats. So we do have to, we do have fuel, substantial amount of fuel. Grounds is a, is a relatively high number. I would just like to point out that of that number, there's roughly nine thousand dollars that goes to a lease for the, the shipyard office space. And then there's about another nine thousand dollars that goes towards slip fees. So there's not, so by the time you take those two numbers out, there's not enough, there's not a huge amount that goes to management of the rest of our grounds for maintenance and repair maintenance. So although it looks like a huge number, there's, you know, it's quickly used up just for those two. And then our repair maintenance of vehicles, that's what we use every year to just maintain our, our vessels and we have three vessels and then we also have two trucks. If you're familiar with vessels, there's just a lot of maintenance that has to be done from, from year to year. So our boats require a lot of maintenance and that's a, that's a relatively small number for three commercial grade patrol vessels that service the community for the better part of, of eight months. Online moorings, that's a large number. That number there basically covers the, 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 the cost for us to provide online mooring permit renewal services to, to all of our mooring permit and anyone that were to submit any type of Morning permit and anyone that were to submit any type of waitlist application online. So we bring in, you know, over three hundred thousand dollars and. And mooring permits roughly and it and it costs us to to run that everything online, it costs us about twelve thousand dollars a year. I'm sorry, the used occupancy is broken out down below, so they don't don't include that in the grounds above there, it's 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 separate down below. And then utilities, that's Comcast. Basically Comcast internet that we use. At our office. We do have connection through the town, but we also have a separate line that brings in that we use to connect to our. Our cameras and also provide. Internet service when we when we lose town internet service, next slide please. We're asking for additional request of three thousand dollars for repair maintenance of grounds. The state is hoping when they redo the boat ramp. This year to put in a a pair with some docks and this will allow us to take those docks in and out every year. And also do some maintenance or appear on them. And it also allows, there's also some money in there to. Either put in or take the the docks of town here out or or launch them. In the previous budget cycle, we'd ask for funds either to put them in or take them out of town here, so this will allow us to either. Put them in or take them out, whichever we hadn't funded prior previously. Next slide if there is one. Hope that's everything.
Ken, thank you. I'm going to turn it over first to Liz, but before that, just noting that. In past year, you have really been the rock star in securing state funding for the town, various grants and programs, so. We thank you in in advance for what you're going to be doing in the upcoming year and what what you have already done. Liz.
Thank you, Ken, for the presentation, and I know you you do a lot of work with the grant, so thank you. And we see that with the marine boats, what what is the useful life of the marine boat, so the one that's being sent out to be? Kind of refurbished.
So that's a great, that's a great question. You know, we've been looking at the life of these to be twenty years, but I think that the the life of them is is going to be well. Well, in excess of twenty years, I think I'll be retiring with with these, the hull of these boats. As long as they're they're maintained. They seem, I I think that they could last thirty, forty and even greater than that. So I I don't think we'll be we'd be replacing the hull of these boats unless we decided we didn't want that that style of boat any any longer.
Got it, okay. Great, well, thank you for maintaining them so well and and using the the grants to their full extent. The town pier project, will the pump out service be disrupted?
So it's uncertain right now, with the construction of town wharf. The project, you know, whether it'll go into the summer or not. I'm working with. You know, with the town engineer and everything to try to make sure that if it does go into the summer, that we make sure that. You know, the pump out service and and all the other things that we need to provide to the boaters are uninterrupted.
Okay, great, thank you.
Really need to make sure that the the pump out service is is not interrupted because there's no other place for us to. Offload that waste. The town hall offloads there, there's no other place for us to go. That's a reasonable place for us to get to in a short period of time, so we're working with JR to make sure that that's that's operational.
Okay, great, thank you. And I noticed there's no overtime line in your budget. Is there is there ever any overtime?
There's there's no overtime, basically the way it works, the way it works for my department is the assistants. The part of the seasonal part-time staff don't get overtime, they're paid, they're paid. On an hourly basis, and then my head assistant harbor master. Joe Driscoll gets comp time. So anything he works over his regular scheduled hours becomes comp time and he will use that up. Over the winter, so he'll work a reduced somewhat reduced schedule in the winter. And then I work reduced schedule in the winter also because I work. A heavier shift load in the summer.
Sure. Okay, great, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill.
All right, Ken, thanks for the presentation and thanks for doing such a great job managing your budget, you you do great. With everything, I'm sorry if I missed it, how many patrol boats do you have?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How many patrol boats do you have?
We have three patrol boats and we have a rowboat.
How does that work with the, how does it work with the twelve? I know it's you full-time and you have another full-time harbor master, how does it work with the twelve assistants? With the only three boats?
So. You know, we are, we are kind of light with three boats, we do have a a request. For a fourth boat in capital outlay that will be, that we're looking to to fund in the next couple of years. But you know, one one of the boats is a pump out boat, so that goes out on the weekends and a couple nights a week. And it goes out any other time we need to to do pump outs, and then the other two boats are the patrol boats and they basically. You know, they kind of run. You know. All day and all evening and and you know, the the staff, we you know, they basically get two two staff on each boat and they'll basically run. You know, all day and all evening. With two staff and they'll they'll operate in two different areas of the harbor. Does that make sense?
Guys, okay, so I was wondering.
We don't, we don't all, we don't put all twelve staff on and put them all out at one time.
Yes, okay, got that, I know, I know they're part-time. And utilize them in the summer, so that's great.
Exactly, so like on a busy Saturday, we'll put both boats out, maybe four people. And then. We'll put four people on and we'll have three boats out. Now, if one boat goes down, then we only have one patrol boat.
Got it.
So, so so we're, it's, we're real tight, I don't want a lot of boats because they're expensive, there's a lot of maintenance that goes on, but we are looking to. To have one more vessel so that if we do have one that goes down, which they do go down. You know, you could just have bad fuel and and you know, you get, you know. An injector gets flogged on a Saturday and now the engine doesn't run. You know, you do need to have that that other option to have another vessel, so we do have have that in in the in the capital outlay plan.
That that graph we had up there of the revenue that comes in from transient slips. You know, from two thousand one to 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 last year. I mean, that's impressive, it's coming, it's gone up significantly. So you you have, I I guess with only the, with only the small amount of patrol boats, you have enough. To to, I guess, I mean, I'm not a boater, but you have enough to cover that.
To cover the collection of the transient rentals?
Yes.
So we cover, we we do a lot of our collection in advance through the online. Mooring management system, so people will make their reservations ahead of time. And make the payment, and then when the when the boats are out, they'll. They'll do a spot check of the transient. Mornings to make sure that the people on them have a reservation and paid, they can't always check that, but they do a very good job of trying to to check that, and then if. If we notice the boats haven't made a reservation, we'll ask them to either break free or just go online and and and. And make make the reservation and make payment.
Great, that's. That's that's great that it's gone up so much. And Ken, my and my last question for you, Liz and Joe mentioned it and. Want to echo it as well, you do such a great job for the town and bringing in grant money. Are you able to tell the public just how much? Grant money you were able to bring in for the harbor last year, do you know offhand?
Um, I think last last year. I think we just, last year was probably about. Three hundred and thirty thousand, I think, last year.
Well, great job, I mean, you really. You're all, I know you're always looking for grant opportunities and it all goes to our harbor, so. Appreciate all you do, Ken.
Thank you, thank you.
Ken, just just a couple of questions and comments. Just getting back to your expenses, not the salaries, just expenses, they're showing about an eight percent increase. For the year, what you're projecting. Do you see any way to manage that or is this really bare bones? That's compared to last year.
Yeah, do I see, like, do I, do we actually need the eight percent increase?
Yes.
Yeah, so the eight percent increase that we're looking for. Is is are are things that we. We have to, we have to account for that we can't do without.
Okay.
You know, the 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 new boats that we're getting now. We used to run two-stroke engines.
Yep.
And Evan Ruth since has gone out of business, so now we have to move over to four strokes. Four strokes now require oil changes. And we're going to be required to do so many oil changes throughout a season because of the number of hours we put on. So rather than just burning oil, we're going to be required to do oil changes, which requires taking the bottle of the water. Which isn't a big deal for us because we have trailers and trucks, but it's really the expense of doing a oil change, so that's something that's. That's being put in there. Some of the other increases are, you know, the budget was decreased a number of years ago because we were trying to put. The 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 streetlights that I pay for, we're trying to put them into this, the streetlight plan. For the town to pay. And we tried to do that and then we found out we couldn't put the streetlights into the streetlight plan, so I have to pay for the streetlights, so those are now being. Budgeted for. So the streetlights are something that are, we're looking for funding for to pay. The other, some of the other increases that are in there is actually for fuel, but it was, it's an increase, but it's actually not really an increase. Last year, we didn't receive, it was budgeted for, I don't know what happened, but we didn't receive. Some of the funds we sought, we asked for for fuel, so. It looks like it's a fuel increase, but it really isn't a fuel, it's just we weren't funded, we should have been funded for fuel, so. We really can't do without some of the things that we're asking for there.
Yep, got it. Your department, I think, is rather unique compared to most of the departments we're looking at. Could you, the boats and the and the the area. The waterways are used by non-residents as well as residents to a very large extent. How how effective are you at communicating with? The many non-residents who come to Hingham's Waters and is there, you've got sufficient. Budget items to to address that, I'm thinking particularly with the upcoming work at the town wharf and the boat ramp. Making sure that. That work, the schedule, the impacts on boating are communicated to boaters.
Yeah, so we have good communication with all of our permit holders, which. Include a lot of people that are not town residents.
Right.
And once we, once we push information out to them, especially to the yacht clubs, the information. Spreads like wildfire, so. We have good communication with the boating public.
Okay, I've got one final question and I'm not sure it's really within. Your jurisdiction, so I'll ask it more broadly. Do you know, is the state looking at the carbon footprint of boats and vessels and jet skis? You know, you you mentioned, you know, oil changes, you know, and the boat's carbon footprint is probably primarily the emission of CO2. From burning fuel. With the town's focus. On reducing our carbon footprint. Are are the waterways being looked at as part of that?
I know that they are, I don't have a lot of details to get into that tonight. I can tell you that, you know, our outboard engines have come, no, I I was just mentioning that we were running two-stroke engines.
Yep.
I don't want anyone to think that our two-stroke engines were, you know, like what they were, you know, twenty years ago where. They were spewing out, you know, oil and and residue like that, our our two-stroke engines were were a. You know, a very unique hybrid and and high-performing, very clean burning engine. So, you know, engines have come along with a long ways now and now they're they're four-stroke. They're they're very clean, but I think there's still a long ways to go with with the marine environment. Especially with engines and and so forth. But it's still, it it still lags behind everything on land, it's going to lag behind the cars and. And stuff like that, but I know they're looking at it at the state level, but I don't have a lot to get into that on tonight.
Okay, great, thank you. So I now will turn to members of the public who may have questions on the harbor masters budget. I see. Looks like John Borger, if you could just give your name and address and then your question, please.
Yes, John Borger, fifty-three Lafayette Avenue, just some comments. First of all. Ken, the online mooring renewal process is a wonderful amenity, it's a great convenience. I'm sure you are realizing a lot of clerical labor savings. And that's something that is very much appreciated by boaters. Secondly, I know the the new ramp with new with floats. Docks next to it is something that you have been advocating. For for many years and it's going to make a huge difference for a lot of people, especially sailors. Who are launching from the ramp and launching is often. A kind of orchestrated chaos where you have to do a lot of things very quickly. In succession and having a float to tie up to even for ten or fifteen minutes is gonna. Make for less chaotic launchings and safer launchings. Kudos for getting rid of the the two strokes, I understand we're saying they are probably hyper-efficient two strokes. But there's still two strokes and four strokes are great and. If you want to launch an initiative to do some missionary outreach. To Hingham boaters, you still have two strokes, Hingham Net Zero would be happy to. To partner with you in that effort, and finally, let me just say, been dealing with you folks for years, you are unfailingly. Courteous and helpful, and I think you're a wonderful asset to the town and really grateful that you're here, so thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Anyone else with? Comments or questions? I see no one else. So Ken, thank you again. And we will now turn to your chief. Chief Jones and the England Police Department's budget.
Good evening, Joe, thank you. So start this budget presentation for the Police Department for fiscal year twenty-three. Next slide, please. So just start with our, the department's core values are of integrity, service, excellence and leadership. Excellent. So this just shows our calls for service and the increase, steady increase over the past years. Last year, calendar twenty-one, we saw thirty thousand fifty-three calls for service for the police department. It's the highest number we have on record, most frequent type of calls are nine-one calls. Building and area checks, motor vehicle stops and medical related calls for service. Next slide, please. So just some of the statistics of the department from the court, there was eighty-three arrests last year, a hundred and sixty-four criminal complaint applications. And the officers and staff completed one thousand five hundred and four incident reports. For the traffic division and the officers in patrol, there was a little over three thousand motor vehicle citations and warnings issued. There was three hundred ninety-six motor vehicle crashes and two hundred and twenty-one parking tickets were. Issued for twenty twenty-one, next slide, please. So our department right now consists of fifty-three full-time officers, one chief of police, one deputy chief. Five lieutenants, seven sergeants. And thirty-nine patrol officers, of those we have four school resource officers and three detectives. So some additional staff that we have that helps out, we have three civilian staff. We have two police canines, nine school crossing guards and twenty-five special police officers. Next slide, please. So some of our key initiatives, you know, is to really, we're looking to start our community programs back up again. Since COVID, we've really lost. A lot of contact that that we enjoy having with the community. A lot of contact that, that we enjoy having with the community, uh, with our citizens' police academies, uh, both here at the station and at Linden Ponds. Um, our national layout that we do, our family fun day. And just regular community meetings that we have with canine demonstrations and boys and girl scouts. Um, and we're looking to partner with, uh, other community groups to offer some new programs coming up in the future. Um, training, uh, we're constantly training, we're looking to offer, uh, as much training and, and, uh, continuing education for our officers and staff as possible. Um, and as always, we're trying to focus on some regional, uh, training opportunities with our surrounding, um. Agencies. So some outreach that we do, we, uh, have partnered with the Plymouth County Outreach for Drug Dependency and Overdose, we have a, uh, domestic violence advocate. And, uh, we have a, uh. Mental health clinician on a, uh, a grant that we share, uh, with another agency, and we were just, uh. Last town meeting, we approved for a full-time, uh, mental health clinician, uh, that we're looking to bring on board, uh, shortly. Next slide, please. So for the, um, staff and expenses, the, uh, fiscal twenty-one salaries. Uh, wages full-time is a four million, seven hundred and thirteen. Uh, approximately, uh, for the clerical staff, it's two hundred and sixteen thousand. Uh, crossing guides is a hundred and three thousand. Um, overtime budget for the department is twenty-nine thousand. Uh, contractual benefits to the, uh, to the staff covered by collective bargaining is, uh, one million, one hundred and seventy-six. Uh, for expenses, uh, it's four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred, we have, um. Largest of those is for, uh, the officer's equipment, uh, our fuel budget. Uh, continued education and, um. Vehicle repairs and training supplies. Uh, next slide, please. So for additional requests for, uh, upcoming fiscal year. Uh, we're looking to, uh, increase our department by three, uh, full-time officers, and we're looking to do that to reduce our overtime expenditure. And also reduce the number of times that officers, uh, are being forced to work, uh, double shifts. Hand in hand with that, uh, our overtime budget. Constantly exceed that every year, um, and I'm looking to increase that by forty thousand dollars to cover, uh, unfunded, uh, mandatory trainings. Um. Investigations, reports, court appearances and special town. Events. I think that's the last slide. That we have in the budget, yes. Um, so I have, um, a few additional, uh, slides, uh, great, if I could, uh, just share. Uh, my screen briefly. So can everyone see, uh? I guess it's going to stay on that screen over there, can everyone see this graph?
It's a calls for service.
Yeah, so, uh, this graph just shows our calls for service since, uh. And the number of sworn personnel that we had starting in, uh, nineteen eighty and going through, uh, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, you can see that the number of staff, uh, sworn patrol officers that we have, and these don't include the school resource officers, that's why you see that number's forty-nine and not, uh, fifty-three. Um, but that's consistent across all those years, I took out the, uh, offices that were assigned to the schools or the safety officer, which was the case in nineteen eighty. So you see that that number actually decreased while the calls for service, um. Has pretty much skyrocketed steadily, um. Through last year. Uh, this graph here shows, um, the categories that overtime falls into, the total hours. Uh. You see the patrol is, is the highest category followed by, uh, training is the second, uh. Second most category, and if you break down the patrol, um. Overtime. You know, these are the, the categories, there are codes that fall into that, 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 uh. Category of overtime, and you see the majority there is due to, uh, shift overtime. And that's, um, not to put extra people on the ship, that's to maintain, uh, a minimum staffing level, uh, on the road. So this graph here shows, um, what shifts, the, we operate on, on three shifts, the midnight date shift. The eight-to-four shift and then the four-to-twelve shift. So this shows, the first column shows the, um, total shifts of overtime on each of those shifts. Second column shows the number of times that, uh, that overtime shift was offered and no one took it, and an officer was forced to then work, uh, a double shift. So, uh, the total number over here, uh, shows a total number of shifts, uh, that there was overtime on. And then you'll see that forty percent of those shifts were for. Um, where officers were actually forced to work, um. That shift. And that is what I have for the presentation, is there any questions on these, uh? Before I close out these graphs?
Uh, I don't have any questions on the graphs, but we will have questions in general. And, and I like this, I get to start by putting Liz on the hot seat again, um. Liz, do you have any, uh, any questions for our chief?
Thank you, chief, for the presentation and all you do for the town, I'm, I'm glad you showed that graph, um, with the calls of service, because I think that is an important note that. The, the number of officers has actually gone down and the number, the number of calls and, and what you're doing for the community has actually gone up pretty significantly, so. I think that's a, an important point. Um, the mental health clinician, what is the timing to hire that person?
Right, so that was, um, actually just before this meeting, I was in the personnel board meeting where the job description and the, uh, classification was, um. Voted on and approved, so we're going to be looking to move on that, uh, very soon.
Okay, excellent. Um, and then can you just talk a little bit about the, the additional request for the officers and how that will offset the, um, the overtime cost?
Sure, of course, so, um, one officer really isn't going to do much for, uh, to reduce overtime, uh, because we run across three shifts as, as you saw. Um, so three officers would allow us to put one additional officer on every shift, which would hopefully bring down that shift overtime, which you saw was the, was the greatest cause of overtime that we have, so. The three may seem like an odd number, but it's actually because we have three shifts, and that's what you, you need to be able to, to realize a, a reduction in the overtime rate.
Okay, got it, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Bill, are you abstaining on this discussion? That was a yes, I assume.
Yes, Joe, I'm going to abstain on this, yeah, thank you.
Thanks. So chief, I just have a, a, a couple of questions and comments. Looking at your salary and expense increase, um, they're significant, I'm seeing an eleven percent increase in salaries. And a twenty-three percent increase in expenses. And, uh. Help me to understand, particularly in the expense side. What the need is, uh, for those, uh, in significantly increased expenses.
Sure, so, uh, on the salary side, uh, those are all contractual.
Yep.
Um, increases, um, so, and on the expense side, um, that's to maintain, uh, the same level of service that we, that we provided last year. So we've seen a, a large increase in, uh, in the cost of everything, um. Uh, across the board, but especially in, in, you know, electronics and, um. Things like that, so the, the price has just gone, gone up, um, one thing that we are able to, to decrease actually is our, is our fuel consumption with the hybrid vehicles that we purchased.
Yep.
Um, last year, which we, we've seen a, uh. You know, a really incredible, uh, reduction, and so. Last year, we compared a, a six-month period, um, because we just got the cars in, uh, in July of this year. So, uh, we saw a savings, uh, compared to the previous year of, of six thousand, two hundred and forty-five gallons of gas. Uh, an increase in miles per gallon between the two vehicles of, of over six miles per gallon. Uh, and approximate savings in that six-month period of the town is seventeen thousand, uh, three hundred dollars, so obviously if you, if you double that, it's, uh, thirty-four thousand, six hundred projected savings for, for the year. Um, some really great news is that, that, uh, proximal greenhouse gas emissions that we saved over that six-month period is, is fifty-five point five. Uh, tons of carbon dioxide, so. Uh, that's one area that we're, that we're actually saving on, uh, even though we're showing an increase, um, you know, overall.
Are, are body cameras in the budget, if you could just talk a little bit about how that's being phased in, the schedule and also the costs? And possible ways to, uh, cover those costs?
Sure, so we do, um, we do have, uh, a body cam policy that's been agreed to, uh, by, uh, both of our unions. Um, we are, um, going to be pursuing, um, purchasing body cams, we have it in our current, uh, capital, uh, schedule for this year. Um, additionally, we're also applying for, uh, grants as they become available to cover the cost of the, uh, of the body worn cameras. So I'm, I'm hoping to have them, um, with the officers, you know, online, uh. You know, if it's in the capital structure, it'll be after July, but, but if we get a grant before, then it would be, uh, before that.
Uh, but you, you have, uh, we are applying for grants to, to cover this.
Yes, we are.
Um, and then final question, uh, which is not necessarily, not really a budget question, uh, but it concerns the public safety facility that's being planned. Could you talk a little bit about the urgency of, of moving forward with that, the need that the police department has really to? To move out of its current, uh, location into something that is more advanced?
Sure, so, um, basically, um, our, our current space, we outgrew it, um. Pretty much the day we moved in, uh, unfortunately, uh, the facility that we're in was never designed to be, uh, a police station, uh, this was an old school, I went to school here. Um, so the, the police department was sort of fit into the, to the area between, uh, the school and the, and the senior center. Uh, the layout of the building isn't conducive to being, uh, a police station, one example of that is, is the, uh. The booking and the, and the detention areas is on one side of the building. Um, and the, the only public exit to the building is, is, uh, is all the way near the side of the building. So if you have a prisoner that needs to be released, um. From detention, you have to walk them through the entire secure area, um, of the police station, you're walking past evidence, you're walking past the armory, you're walking past the roll call room, you're walking by the officer's personal equipment. And then all the way out to the front door, so the layout of the building just isn't, uh, is inadequate for, for our needs. Um, we don't have any storage here in this, uh, in this facility, uh, we have no training space, um, our locker rooms are, um. Inadequate for this, for the, uh, for our employees, we don't have, uh, enough lockers and the lockers aren't sized appropriately. Um, there's no way to separate, um, the officer's equipment if they come back from. Um, scene, for example, where they either walk through, uh, bodily fluids or on a motor vehicle accident, maybe some, some fluids from a vehicle that are hazardous. Um. You know, it's a, it's a regular high school locker style locker that they have right now, uh, where police style lockers have a separate. Um, area for, uh, to store footwear, so there isn't that cross-contamination, um. You know, there, there's no ventilation in, in the, uh, in the, in the lockers and things like that, so. Uh, and then there's no privacy, so if we have somebody come in, um, actually just, just this evening, in our lobby, we had an officer trying to take a report from. From a, um. A resident, and then we had three people standing in that same space with, with that officer. Uh, waiting to speak to somebody at the front window, uh, and that officer's getting personal information from that person, so. Uh, you know, we just need an, an area where we can take people to come into our, our, um, building that we can talk to privately if they have, uh, you know, crime they want to report, uh, whether it's identity fraud or. Uh, an assault or domestic, they need a, a, a place to be able to speak with, with our employees, um, that's secure and private. Um, that's a very. Broad overview of, of our challenges here, but.
I mean, we, we, each member of the select board has taken a tour, uh, and we do appreciate the need. Uh, we see the need and, uh, just letting you know that, uh, we're committed to moving forward with the, uh, public safety facility project.
Thank you very much.
Uh, are there members of the public who have questions for, uh, Chief Jones on the police department budget? Seeing none. I move to the select board budget, uh, with our town administrator, Tom Mayo, and I, Michelle, are you also going to be part of this?
Michelle is available as my backup as needed, but she's going to run the slides for me.
Okay, so Tom, please proceed.
Great, thank you very much, Joe. Um, okay, so the select board budget for this coming fiscal year, obviously, you know, we manage the town, uh, that's the, that's the biggest thing we do, and we do it all day, every day. Um, that includes two hundred and fifty employees, six unions, and we got twenty-three, uh, departments, uh, their budgets and personnel, et cetera, and all that go with it. And that's across eight buildings. We have some amazingly enough in Hingham, four hundred local elected and, uh, and appointed officials across some seventy. Boards and committees, which is just, uh, an amazing number, uh, both of those numbers are just fantastic, so. This town is very engaged and, and we're help, happy to help support and manage that, uh, that effort. Um, of course, there are roughly fifty or so annual, uh, select board meetings that we, that we support. Um, with, uh, all of the pos, policy decisions that, uh, that you folks, uh, put forward, we try to support all of that. We have, uh, we have to prepare the annual budget for the town, uh, townwide, uh, we have to put together the annual town meeting warrant of which the budget is a part. And of course, uh, everyone's favorite, the town annual town report, like to kick that out and give folks an opportunity to read about what is happening in their town. As one of my, uh, several different statutory roles as the town administrator is that of chief procurement officer. Um, I am responsible for all purchasing done through the community, as if you remember, uh, about two, I think, years ago, uh, we had funded and have subsequently hired. The position of, uh, procurement, um. Uh, procurement manager in the form of, uh, Kathy Riley, who works out of our office, and she's fantastic and doing great work. We also manage, uh, citizen inquiries as they come in, and of course, um, everyone's favorite, public records requests, those are, those are regularly coming in and. People have a right to know what's going on in their government, and we try to, we endeavor to, to provide that information as, as we can. Um, as quickly and efficiently as we can. Uh, so one of the, one of the big items, I know that, um. That we're working on, uh, across the entire town is to manage, uh, all of the licensing, uh, processes and requests, that's for, uh, liquor licenses and the like. Uh, we also work very closely with our elected officials across the state. Um, and, and even the federal government, we have, uh, you know, uh, Representative Lynch is a, is a regular, um. Is a regular at, at many of our events, certainly our town meeting, and we can work closely with all of our state, um, state contingent of local officials. And of course, uh, always, um, much of what we do is coordinated through our legal team, uh, we have a town council and. A real estate council, we have, uh, personnel council, and of course, our litigating council. Okay. One of the, one of the main metrics that we kind of judge ourselves on, I think, is that of the, the bond rating. And Hingham has now for many years, um. Had been, uh, earned a triple-A bond rating from all three major, uh, credit rating agencies, which is really a great testament. To how the town, uh, runs and operates, uh, but also the residents of the community and, uh, and their engagement as well. Um, it's a, you know, it is a strong financial indicator, we are, uh, we are a shining light on the hill. Uh, with regards to the state of Massachusetts, we are one of fifteen, uh, triple-A rated communities by Moody's, and, um, and we're very proud of it. And of course, that helps, that has several, uh, several benefits, you know, the least of which is lower cost of borrowing. Uh, you know, one of our, our, our financial advisor regularly talks about, uh, better access to the market when we need it. And, um, and of course, the reality is, is it helps it to attract, um, uh, the business, uh, business to the community, so. You know, whenever we can do that, we're looking to increase new growth, uh, overall economic development is something that I think we, we focus on quite a bit here in this, in this office, so. This is a part of that. Michelle? Thank you. So some of our key initiatives, uh, obviously, we're still working through this never-ending pandemic. Um, I just, uh. Boy, do I wish, I'm looking forward to the year when I can take the, delete that bullet off of this list, but unfortunately, it's still, um, first and foremost on, on all of our minds. You'll see a COVID report from me after this presentation that is unfortunately lengthy yet again. Uh, we do have a new, uh, dual-town, assistant town administrator structure, um, where Michelle Montziger works, uh, functions now as our finance, uh, director, our finance, um, assistant town administrator, and we have Art Robert. Has recently joined the team, uh, several months ago and works as our operations, uh, chief in the town, and they both do fantastic work, so. Very happy to have them on board and that structure is flourishing. Um, you know. One of the things that Michelle's been working on, uh, under, uh, Liz's guidance is, um, the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force, I think that's, that's going to be something that will help inform. All the, all of the budget decisions that we as a t, team are going to be making here in the next, in the next couple of months, so, um. You know, that will, that's very important work and, and new to the town, so, you know, um, I'm looking forward to see how that, how that plays out. Uh, I think, you know, we have a couple of big, uh, debt exclusion, uh, potential debt exclusion projects before us with the public safety facility and, uh, the senior center work. Uh, of course, we work closely with the, with the school department as well on, uh, plans for, uh, for foster school. This, we're in, we've entered our second year of water system ownership, which is amazing. Feels like just yesterday, we were at town meeting, but but here we are in year two of of operations. Things are going very well. Fully solvent in year one, as expected, and looking forward to an even better year, too. I just spoke about the economic development work we do. I think one of the one of the big portion, one of the big parts of that of making economic development growth in town a success is by offering a coordinated and predictable permitting process for through our permitting boards. And I know that's something that Art has been working with with a lot of our permitting departments on on doing that work. So that's great. We have, you know, we always try to maximize technology wherever we can. You know, we want to be as efficient as possible and streamlined and responsive to the citizen needs as well as the policy direction, again, that the three of you provide us. We have a, we have a new communications program in place over the last, I think, two to three months now, and I think it's going very well. We have a communications consultant that helps us get the message out about some of the wonderful things that are happening in town. Too often, I always said that, you know, the public only hears about things when something goes wrong. Well, there's a lot going right every day, and and now we have an opportunity to let everybody know about the wonderful things that are happening in their community that they can participate in and and be proud of. So they're helping us with that, and I think it seems to be going pretty well. Green Communities is a program that I think we're very proud of. We've been a member now for about three or four years. Art Robert has has taken on the lead on that program, and he is he has recently got us a new grant, or we submitted a new grant application with them. And that's going to be working on efficiency projects here at Town Hall and the high school. So we're looking forward to that work. And then, you know, the blanket grant opportunities, we're forever trying to find ways to offset some of the expenses we've been hearing about through all of these budget discussions for the last several weeks with non-Hingham tax based money. We're always looking for ways to 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 bring new money into the community to help us pay for some of the programs we offer. So. So we do all of that with six full time personnel, myself and Michelle and Art I spoke of. We talked a little bit about Kathy Riley, the Procurements and Contracts Manager. We also have Sharon Perfetti as our office manager, and Heidi Gaul works as our executive assistant here in this office. And of course, the three most important employees the town the town enjoys is the three of you. Bill Ramsey is Clyde, Joe Fisher are our Select Board Members. We have about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, a little bit more than that, in expenses annually. Some of the big ones, I spoke about the communications consultant, that's thirty-five thousand dollar line the last two years. Actually, I think this should might be the first one where it made the line, where it made the the books. And then twenty-seven thousand dollars in miscellaneous property consulting needs and approximately sixteen grand or so for different committee expenses, things like like recording clerks and the like. So those are the standard salaries and expenses. Michelle? I do have two additional requests that are on the on the budget at this stage. And I will remind everybody that this I'm presenting these right now as the department head. This is kind of funny. I'd have I necessarily have to wear a couple of different hats. I'm the department head for the Select Board Office, but I'm also the town administrator, right? So this presentation is me presenting these these positions and these additional requests as a department head, just like every other department has done. You just heard Chief Jones present some additional requests for his department. So I'm presenting these as things that I feel would be beneficial to the community to be managed out of my department. I I, as the town administrator, will have to assess all additional requests globally here in the next few weeks. But for now, these are these are being recommended by I by myself as the town Select Board Department Head. So the first is a part time sustainability coordinator. I'm budgeting this at forty-eight thousand dollars. That's a two thirds number for a an anticipated full time employee that would earn approximately seventy-two thousand dollars a year. We still have to grade this right up the job description, grade it through the personnel board. But that's what we would do that through the Hingham process. Hingham, the idea here is that Hingham would pay two thirds of the position. Cohasset has shown and expressed an interest in sharing a position with us. They're recognizing, as I have, as I am in speaking with their town manager, Chris Senior, that Hingham obviously is a much larger community and will have larger and more diverse needs. So I asked that, would he mind if we took this position and do a two thirds, one third role, and he thought that was appropriate. So we're looking at requesting two thirds of a full time position as a sustainability coordinator. Again, job description to be flushed out still, but I'm anticipating sustainability issues, energy efficiency initiatives, managing the Green Communities Program, finding other grant ideas, helping the town identify new best practices for with regards to energy efficiency and in green initiatives in general. So we like the we like the idea of starting out this way and then growing into the position in future years as as appropriate, once we kind of get our feet under us. The second position that I'm requesting as an additional request is a part time grant writer. This was a staple for many years on our additional request list. I remember my predecessor, Ted Alexiatus, asked for this position many times. It's probably been off now for a couple of years as we work through the pandemic and and some of the some of the budget issues we ran into just prior to the pandemic. But I'm bringing it back because you know, some of the work that the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force, I think, is gonna is gonna is gonna roll out when we when we see their report is, you know, the town needs to find new and creative ways to raise revenue. And I think that, you know, any chance we get to bring in outside money back into the the community, back into Hingham to help us pay for our services is gonna be is gonna be important. So I put this back on there. I I think there'll be a a good conversation around it between you folks and the advisory committee. And of course, Michelle, Art, and I will 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 talk it through along with all of the other requests as well. And we'll see what happens towards, you know, as we as we come out the other end of the of the recommendations, formal recommendations that I make. But I think that this is something that, you know, the town should really take another good, hard look at. You know, we we got to find ways to pay for everything we want to do. So. Now, that's all I have, Joe. Thank you.
Great, Tom, thank you. You and your team keep us all together, and we really appreciate the the work, the dedication and and the level of sophistication that you bring. So we appreciate it. I will take exception to characterizing my fellow board members as the part time personnel.
Said the most important part time personnel.
All I can say is Liz and Bill are are at it, you know.
That's true.
Hundred and ten percent. And it's, you know, it's an honor to be working with them, even though we're classified as part time personnel. I will say we are probably the lowest paid part time personnel in town.
You all need agents.
We do. And with that, I'm going to start with Liz Klein.
There's not even a part time. No, I think you, Tom, for the presentation. And certainly, it's a joy to work with you and Michelle and Art. I definitely echo your your comments about that structure with the Assistant Town Administrator working so well. I think it has in such a short time with Art being on board, it has increased the capacity and what we're able to do and accomplish just in a few months. So I think that will will certainly continue. As far as the additional requests, certainly the Sustainability Coordinator is something that our town is committed to. We've heard from lots of residents on this. So thank you to everyone that called, emailed, wrote letters, wrote business cases for this. It's an important piece. And in addition to kind of what you were saying to describe it, I think it's it's an important element of the climate action plan and and the committee's work to be able to actually execute what they're putting together. So while I'm very sensitive to adding new things and and trying to, you know, figure out the sustainable budget, I think we we are very aware that there are certain positions possibly like this and the grant writer and other positions that help us do our job better and create opportunities and and even generate revenue for the town. So so thank you for for putting this together. My only question was around the Communications Consultant. I saw that consulting services is its own line item, so we will continue in the same fashion that we have this year. Is that right?
Yeah, that's a great question, Liz. We had talked about evaluating that and determining whether it would more appropriate as a staff person or in that role. Frankly, I think it's it's working really well. One of the benefits we get of having that consultant, and and we had hoped this would be the case, and I think we're realizing it, is they have a number of people, obviously, on staff there that you get different talents with depending on the issue you bring to the table. So so I think we're getting really great professional support from them. I I don't see a reason to bring it on board. It would cost more to bring it on board as a full time employee or even a part time employee. So I think we're getting a bargain and we're getting excellent professional support.
Great. So do you think the I know it's set up as a certain number of hours and certain number of press releases per month. Do you think that capacity is enough for what we need?
I I do, yeah. We're still learning to use it as a community, as a town. I talk to the department heads every two weeks in our in our bi weekly department head meeting about finding ways to to reach out to them and let those folks know what's going on and 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 try to get it out to the town with what the department heads are working on. But it that's a learning curve. So right now, we're actually probably not even using the full the full amount. So I wouldn't say that we we need more just yet. But, you know, I I think we'll reevaluate as we get several more months into this because what I'm hopeful is that our department heads really sink into it, really like it, and and are able to communicate better with the public through it. And then at that point, if we need to find a way to change the contract a little, we'll we'll do that then.
Okay, great, great.
Yeah.
And are they also helping with the website, or is that a different?
No, you know, I I take Richardson through our IT department helps and manages the website for us, show posts. When they write articles or or releases for us, we send them over to Kate, and Kate posts them all to the website.
Okay, great, great. The web design, the website design project, though, that is coming, is that included? Is that already paid for, or is that included in this next budget?
It's actually, it's a free upgrade through the through our existing contract with the web provider, website provider. So that's all included in that in that expense already, whatever, the annual operating expense.
Got it. Okay, great. Thank you.
You bet.
All right, before I before I turn this over to Bill, I just want to follow up on Liz's question about the communications consultant and the website. I I I think where Liz was going was was broader than the website, would also include social media. And to what to what extent are we using their services for social media?
So that's why Michelle is my backup, because she might have some better thoughts on that than I probably could provide.
So the communications consultant is also providing social media content. Every time that you see us push out a story about the recent vaccine booster clinics, the testing site that was set up, the warming centers the other day, some stuff that will come in the future. They're giving, they're working with the departments and us to come up with the full press release and shorter social media posts to kind of link back to those things. So they're helping with their strategy there as well.
Great, thank you. Bill Ramsey.
Yeah, so thank you, Tom, for the presentation. I have I have a lot of a lot of thoughts and comments here, and I I guess, first of all, you know, I've said this to you privately, Tom, but I'm gonna say it publicly tonight, and just can't thank you enough for, you know, the work that you do and you know, I know that you have a tremendous work ethic and you're so dedicated to the town, and I want to thank you so much for what you do and Michelle and and Art as well. It's a great team. And I think Joe would agree with this. If you look at, you know, where where your office is today, Tom, and and the difference the restructuring has made in terms of the division of labor and the ability to respond to the needs at Town Hall and to respond to the needs of citizens. It's just the improvement has been tremendous. So bringing Art on board and moving Michelle into the finance role, it's 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 been great. And so well done on 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 the on the way you've you've divided up the office. It's it's working very, very well. I agree with Liz. I think the communication firm we're working with, it's done a really nice job getting the word out. I've seen a big improvement there. We get some work to do, I think, on the website. I think Liz was kind of alluding to that as well, and I'm looking forward to seeing the web the website redesign. Again, and with with the with the goal of getting more information out to the residents through our website, through our social media piece, and I know that's kind of gonna move forward there. With respect to the the additional request, thank you for adding both of these. Obviously, very interested in the Sustainability Coordinator position. Lot of, I know a lot of folks on the call tonight. Thank you all for your your letters and your feedback into that position. I I share, and I think I colleagues also share your your interest and your passion for this position. And Tom, thank you for kind of getting creative here with trying to, you know, your your thoughts on funding this. I love the fact that you reached out to Cohasset and that Cohasset has an interest in this. And how you kind of getting creative here with funding it with some money from Cohasset and some money from us as well. So I think that's a great way to look at trying to get this into our budget with, we can split some some hours with Cohasset, and we kind of put this into our budget so we can get a coordinator here in town. And also, the grant writer position, which we desperately need can possibly help us fund our Sustainability Coordinator position, I'm hoping, with grants.
Exactly.
So so well done on getting creative on how we fund the Sustainability Coordinator, which I think is our number one priority here, and the Grant Coordinator we need as well. So so good, good job on on both of these additional asks and you know, looking forward to doing our best to get this coordinated position into our budget. So good, good job on the budget, Tom, and and great job with all you do for the town.
Thank you, Bill.
Tom, I I echo Bill, Bill's comments, Liz's comments. I've got just a few of my own. First, looking at the expenses, I'm noticing that unlike any other department, I am seeing a decrease in our expenses for the upcoming year compared to the prior year's budget. How did you manage that?
Michelle, can you?
It's down by about two thousand dollars.
No one's traveling.
Yeah, right. That would be the expenses. Michelle, do you offhand, did we, what what did we move out? We moved some stuff.
There was actually a contractual change in the town administrator contract that does decrease expenses for travel, so that's gone, and we took a little bit more out of that line because a lot of things have shifted to remote trainings and things like that. And then we also cut a little bit out of our stationary supplies. Those are the main areas. We, the only thing that we really bumped up slightly was dues because of bringing Art on board. We wanted to make sure that he could take advantage of MMA, ICMA, and other memberships. But overall, we're we're holding pretty steady.
Yes, literally counting paper clips, Joe.
Yeah, that nice job on managing expenses. You reviewed a lot of the activities that your office, our office, has been involved in. I just want to call out one thing that I think deserves special attention is that the real effort, the personal effort that you and others have made to keeping our local restaurants and businesses going during COVID. There are many obstacles that you've helped us and and other members of our town team have helped us surmount so that the restaurants and businesses keep going, because they're an important part of of our community. On the on the new additional requests, the grant writer, I know that Carlos De Silva is on the call, and he's been asking for this position for several years. I expect he will be applauding that it is now listed as an additional request. And the Sustainability Coordinator, that is a position that all of us have talked about with you, Tom, in terms of making sure that we include it in the budget. And I I also applaud your ability to coordinate with a neighboring town and doing it in a way that may make grant funding available for the position. So so thank you for that.
Right. And that's a great point, Joe, if you don't mind, I just.
Sure.
Capitalize on that for a second. One of the things that I've been, uh, I've been hearing is that some of the grant, um, the grant funding opportunities. Um, especially like to fund regional solutions. So that's another reason why, um, why, uh. Chris, you know, over Cohasset and I, uh, were trying to work together. And of course, you know, the, uh, the global warming sea level rise, that that these problems aren't. That they don't, they don't stop at town boundaries. So, you know, that that's the other, that's the other.
They clearly transcend any border, so, um, that's exactly right. Um, so with that, I will, uh, open up the discussion to members of the public if someone has a comment or question. On the select board budget. I see Carlos. I I knew your hand was gonna be raised, Carlos. You gotta unmute yourself. There we go.
Uh, just when I echo what you just said, I mean, this is a well done, well done. I believe both positions, the sustainability director and also the grant writer, uh, will prove. That we'll be self-funded eventually. Uh, you know, uh, I would love to have seen a full-time sustainability director. But part-time sharing with other towns to start with is a is a is a huge, um, you know, milestone. So I want to thank you for for, you know, supporting that and, uh, with the grant writer, I also believe. That eventually that can become a full-time position. Um, you know, there's plenty of free money out there. We just need to have that individual. Uh, you know, applying for those grants and we'll be getting those money. So I want to thank you and and and, uh. Ms. Chairman, thank you for mentioning again that, yes, that's something that I've been advocating for quite a while, and I'm glad that we are finally getting, uh, well. That we will be getting this position eventually. Thank you.
Great, thanks. I see Brad Moyer. If you could just, uh, give us your, uh, your address, please.
Of course, so, uh, Brad Moyer, thirty-six Wonders Drive, um, here this evening speaking in my capacity as Chair of the Climate Action Planning Committee. Um, I want to first thank the select board members, uh, not only for all the work you do for the town, but your continued support of the sustainability initiatives. In the town and your comments this evening, I think they were spot on. It's very exciting for me to hear such positive endorsement of the sustainability coordinator. Position, uh, and I think Liz, your comment is spot on that, um, this is, uh, in in our view, a necessary position to help fulfill the mission. Of our achieving, uh, a net zero, uh, future, particularly by, uh, twenty forty, which is our current working goal. Um, I also want to thank town administration. Tom is indefe- indefatigable in his support of our efforts. Uh, and Michelle and Art, uh, we've, uh, Michelle, I've worked with you on green communities from the beginning and Art very pleased to see you. Uh, take it over and the conversations that we've had on that. So again, a huge round of applause and thanks to everyone. Uh, I know it's can be difficult to add new costs to the town and I want to highlight a couple of things. Uh, that I hope will make that an easier decision for you. There are kind of three topical areas I think about when we think about a sustainability coordinator position. And there's the grants and the funding, uh, there's the local and regional coordination, and then there's, of course, just the community support that we have for the role. Um, I I think frankly, uh, forty-eight K, uh, if that's where we end up or or close to it. Is a phenomenal, uh, investment opportunity for the town because the possibility for receiving grant funding. Well exceeds, uh, that, uh, kind of nominal cost in my view. So if you think about the grant opportunities that are out there, I'll just highlight some green communities dollars. Um, thirteen million was awarded to a hundred and three communities in twenty twenty, which is an average grant of about a hundred and twenty-six thousand. And eight million to fifty-nine communities were granted in twenty twenty-one, an average of about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Uh, money is there, uh, in that program on the table, uh, waiting for us. Um, if you look at our peer towns and in the greater Boston area, there are about twenty-four communities that have. A sustainability coordinator or a position like that. Um, and many of these towns and through that position have secured grants, um, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Uh, since they've been a part of the green communities. If you look at, um, green communities, money awarded since two thousand and eighteen. Uh, and Hingham became a member in December of two thousand and eighteen. Acton, which has a sustainability coordinator, has received five hundred and seventy-five thousand. In grants, um, in the work through that program. Marshfield, uh, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Um, Citrus, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and I can point out others as well, but there is just plenty of money there. Uh, and so if you think that we, uh, could be a beneficiary of an average grant. Um, well, that is, uh, over double of what the cost that we are proposing for, um, this position. Uh, but green communities is not the only grant opportunities out there. Um, the Infrastructure Investment and Job Acts that was passed in Congress. Uh, has various programs that are going to make, uh, monies available to municipalities. There's EV charging station grants for local communities. Electric, uh, grid resilience grants, community cycling grants and school bus program grants. Um, the Massachusetts Roadmap Bill, um, which is, uh, net zero goal of twenty fifty is pouring money into the green communities program and offering other opportunities. As well. So there's stuff out there to be had. It's just you have to go and get it. Um, and our town administrators, um, have done a good job of that, but they're swamped as well and have a lot to do. Um, and I'd also like to highlight Tom's point, which is spot on, and something that we've heard over and over is that these grant writing bodies love regional coordination. The more you can share among an area, the more likely they are to view that favorably. Um, and so just the design of this position is being shared with Cohasset already is a feather in our cap in that regard as we chase this funding. Uh, so there's a lot of opportunity out there. I'd also like to note that, uh, I can't represent it as a hard and fast commitment, but we've had conversations with our representatives. And, you know, Senator O'Connor's office has, um, indicated that he would be willing to make a special, uh, project earmark for this. And so that could possibly earn us thirty-five to forty K, uh, towards this position in one year. Now that would be a one-time. Um, grant, but if it were to come through, my gosh, we're almost at a zero cost for Hingham in the first year alone. So, I I think from a, from a money standpoint, in my view, uh, this becomes a very easy decision. Um, but the benefits, uh, extend beyond just grants. Um, there's a lot of work that we're doing within Hingham, uh, and then work outside of Hingham in this area. So if you look at. You know, just the various bodies in town who have sustainability in their remit in some regard. Um, there's what, at least ten, you know, so I made a list. You've got, of course, the Climate Action Planning Committee, Master Plan Committee, Planning Board, Cleaner Greener. The the Development Industrial Committee, Energy Action Committee, Harvard Development Committee, HMLP, and so on and so forth. All of these bodies have sustainability as goals in their, um, current plans. Uh, and yet they're kind of working in isolation. It's not that we don't know about each other. It's not that we don't don't talk, but. A lot of us are volunteers, you know, as Tom noted, there are four hundred of us, you know, in town, and we are thrilled and excited and and happy to work for the town. Um, but it often happens after seven PM, you know, or six PM tonight. So, um, so there's a lot that needs to happen during the day and having a single source to funnel that information would be a great boon. For coordinating our efforts and 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 carrying on learnings throughout the groups. And then there's the regional coordination point that that we made. Um, uh, and it's not just with other towns, it's also with, um, bodies that, uh, support towns in this area. Metropolitan Area Planning Council being a primary one and with whom we have a good working relationship. There's so many programs and opportunities that they offer, uh, and having a single point of contact to help funnel that information. And coordinate for the town would be a a great benefit to us. And lastly, I'll just note that there is a ground, I'm sure you've heard of this. You already mentioned the letters and the emails. And so forth, but there's a ground swell of, uh, support for this in the town. Um, I I have a list here of, uh, thirteen different bodies alone that have formally, um, endorsed this position. Uh, League of Women Voters, the CAPC, of course, Cleaner Greener, Hingham Energy Action, Unity Council, Hingham Net Zero, the Water Red Set Association. North and South Rivers Water Set Association, Global Warming Action Group at Linden Ponds, Friends of Barico Park, the Democratic Town Committee, Land Conservation Trust. Even high school groups have gotten involved and others are currently evaluating it and discussing it as well. Um, so I I think from a, the funding can pay for itself and then some. The benefits of coordination with other towns and bodies and just the the groundswell of support you have in the town, I really think makes this position. Uh, a great opportunity for the town and and a no-brainer. So, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Right, thank you, and that was a great summary. Um, covered, uh, a lot of the topics that we have discussed internally, some. Others that we need to make sure that we, uh, pay attention to, uh, so, so thank you. I see now, uh, John Borger.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Fisher. John Borger, fifty-three Lafayette Avenue. On behalf of our two hundred and fifty Hingham Net Zero members. Let me just say that we could do no better than to just fully endorse Brad's comprehensive and compelling statement. I would like to take just a minute to ask those of our members who are here with us tonight to signify their presence and their concurrence. Uh, by raising their hands either physically or using the Zoom icon, which you will find, uh, at the bottom of the page under reactions. Uh, folks, please raise your hands for ten to fifteen minutes. Wow, that's great. I did a nose count earlier. I think I counted, uh. So upwards of eighteen folks, so, so happy to see you here tonight. Uh, Mr. Fisher, um. Thank you for recognizing us and I'm pleased to return the floor to you so that you can, uh, continue with your agenda. Thanks.
Great, and so I will just amend what you said. They don't need to leave their hands up for ten or fifteen minutes.
I I I meant seconds, sorry.
That's what I, that's what I thought. Um, so, um, but but the fact that we have that ground swell of support. Is is so important, um, not only for this initiative this evening, but carrying it forward as 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 we move forward in time. So, uh, so thank you. So I can't tell now who is, who has simply raised their hand or who else has something new that has not yet been, uh, addressed that would like to speak. So please, uh, only have your hand up if if you have something new that, uh, to contribute to this discussion. Uh, so I see, uh, Beth was there. Um, I see now one hand raised. Uh, and I believe the first name is Deborah and the last name is not clear to me and at least on my Zoom. So Deborah, if you can unmute yourself. Give us your, uh, your address and, uh, proceed with your question or comment. Michelle, can you help us? Do you, do you, can you read the last name perhaps?
Maybe Deborah Emmett Pike.
Yes, Deborah Emmett Pike at one oh four Fogway in Hingham.
Yes.
Support this initiative. I think it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do not see any other hands raised at this point. Michelle, do you, do you concur? I just want to make sure I'm not, uh, neglecting anyone here.
Doing a quick scan. I am not seeing anyone else.
I'll tell you, it's very powerful when members of the community come together to support something, uh, and this is a very positive project, so we we do appreciate it. And, uh, Tom, I believe that concludes the select board, uh, budget requests. And we are prepared now for the COVID nineteen update.
Okay, so from some good news to some. Regular seemingly bad news. Um, so COVID nineteen update for today, January thirteenth. Um, regarding some of the COVID data, so across Massachusetts, um, according to the DPH, we are continuing to re- to experience a large. COVID nineteen surge. Uh, the DPH is reporting that the seven-day average of confirmed COVID nineteen cases. Has recently started to come down from a peak of over twenty-two thousand eight hundred on January eighth, twenty twenty-two. To, uh, to over thirteen thousand as of yesterday, so so that part is good. Uh, however, other indicators like hospitalizations and deaths do continue to rise. Uh, as of yesterday, the seven-day average of COVID nineteen hospitalizations, whether that was at two thousand eight hundred and seventy, which was up five hundred and twenty-two. Uh, from two months ago. So, uh, so that's tough. The DPH is reporting five hundred and eighty-nine new cases in Hingham. Uh, during the fourteen-day period, uh, ending on January thir- or January thirteenth today. That's compared to two hundred and thirty-four cases over the fourteen-day period two weeks ago. So that's five hundred and eighty-nine. Up from two hundred and thirty-four two weeks ago. It is important to note that many residents are now taking home-based testing, which is most often not reported and therefore not in these statistics. So, as a result, we're assuming that the actual number of positive cases is, in fact, much higher than what these statistics show. Uh, the overall vaccination rate in Hingham is high. It's at eighty-two percent for fully vaccinated individuals. If you look at only vaccine-eligible individuals in Hingham, so that's people ages five and over. The percent of fully vaccinated eligible residents is at eighty-eight percent. According, according to the DPH, about sixty-one percent of Hingham residents ages five to eleven are fully vaccinated at this point. So that number continues to rise as, uh, as families are getting their children vaccinated. Uh, regarding a booster clinic, uh, so today, uh, we in Hingham were in partnership with the towns of Cohasset, Hull and Situate. And conducted a regional drive, uh, regional drive-in COVID nineteen clinic at the South Shore Baptist Church. The clinic provided ninety doses of Moderna Booster, um, of Moderna Booster Vaccine to eligible residents of these. Uh, of these four communities, uh, all over, uh, eighty, aged eighteen or over. Thanks are due and obviously, as usual, to our health department, fire and police departments from all four communities who. Uh, participated and and helped to make that a successful event. So again, ninety doses of Moderna were issued, uh, today over at. South Shore Baptist. Uh, regarding the temporary COVID nineteen regional testing site, so today, a regional COVID, uh, nineteen drive. Through testing site supported by Hingham, again, Hingham, Cohasset, Hull and Situate. Completed its second day of operation over at three thirty-five Lincoln Street in Hingham. This is the the new property we purchased last year. Uh, and are anticipating for our, uh, use for our new public safety facility up on Route three A. That is, uh, the clinic operations have improved substantially over that two-day period, uh, with certainly reduced wait times. Uh, thanks are due to many teams supporting the site, including the Hingham Building Department, uh, DPW, Health, IT. Police, you know, the public health departments a- across several sectors, uh, and of course, fire. Um, you know, the these things take a lot of work and a lot of hands and and of course, we have a wonderful team as usual. Um, and they helped us all to prepare that site. Going forward, the testing center will be open on Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays from seven AM to four PM. PCR, rapid antigen and rapid antibody tests are available. PCR tests are provided at no cost to the patient and will be billed to a person's insurance provider, or if uninsured, will be free. Uh, rapid antigen and rapid antibody tests will cost, uh, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five dollars respectively. Residents and employees of the four communities will continue to have priority appointment access from seven AM to eleven AM. So I'll say that again, residents of Hingham, Cohasset, Hull and Situate will have priority appointment access. So they will be the only people able to set an appointment between the hours of seven AM to eleven AM. This is a, an effort at making sure that, uh, local residents of the four communities that are hosting the site are able to get, uh, the testing that they need. So online pre-registration is required. No test will be administered without an appointment. And all participants will be notified of tests, of test results by email. Uh, regarding some public health protocols, uh, please continue to take precautions to protect yourself and others from this deadly disease. Uh, as we all know, vaccination, uh, wearing face coverings, practicing social distancing, frequently washing hands. Among other measures is what will help protect all of us, um, from COVID nineteen. On January seventh, so a few days ago, the Hingham Board of Health actually issued a formal health, uh, health advisory. Strongly recommending the use of face coverings by all patrons, visitors and employees within any indoor space. That is open to the public in Hingham. So the Hingham Health Advisory is directed to all visitors and employees. Within any indoor space in all public places, public housing, assisted living facilities. Membership associations and workplaces in Hingham. And again, that is a, uh, strongly recommended use of face coverings is the, the advisory. From the Hingham Board of Health. The CDC and the Mass DPH Guidance on Face Coverings can be found on their respective websites. And the Board of Health recommends the use of N ninety-five, KN ninety-five, or a non-woven, multi-ply surgical mask. Woven cloth masks, gaiters, bandanas and the like, they provide significantly less protection against the airborne respiratory virus. So also remember that any face covering should be fitted closely to one skin to provoke, to prevent unwanted, unwanted gaps and leaks. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Tom. And you've, you've been on top of this and we really appreciate it. Liz, any, any questions on the COVID-19 report?
Thank you, Tom and, and the team. I know it's taken a lot of people and time and energy to get the booster clinic and testing site up and running. So thank you. It's certainly needed. The testing site is being well utilized. I think they're, they're booking out for appointments next week already. So, so that's great. The booster clinic, do we have a sense of if that was at capacity or if there are residents that wanted to get a booster that were unable?
So no one was turned away. It was, we did not reach our capacity. We could have, we could have administered more had we had more registrations, but we're certainly willing to try this again. You know, we have the, the medicine in-house. We have medical freezers in-house that are able to, to store that supply for some time. So as, as we all think that it's the right thing to do, I, again, I work with my command team, our COVID-19 Response Command Team on a weekly basis. And, and we discuss these things on a regular basis and we try to, and, and obviously I, I talk to the three of you and try to get my, my sense of the community and what the community really needs and when. And, and then we, we set up the, the policy and the protocols through the command team to, to do things like that. So if we find that we need another clinic, we're absolutely set another one up, but no one was turned away today.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Joe.
Tom, and I, yesterday morning I went over to the testing clinic to see how it was going. And yesterday there definitely were some delays between tests. But they, those were all cleared up this morning and I know that they're pretty much around schedule today. So it's great to have that up and running and happy to have that service provided to our residents. So, and, but thanks for your help with getting that set up, Tom and Michelle and Art.
Happy to do it. So with respect to the vaccination clinic, I just want to extend our thanks to the South Shore Baptist Church for making their facility available. We couldn't do it without them and it's centrally located. It's, it's very helpful. And with respect to the testing clinic as well as the vaccination clinic, do we know if there's a need for transportation, Tom, that residents may not have been able to go or, or impeded from going because of a lack of transportation? And what can we do to both address the transportation issue and also to make sure that residents are aware? Again, this is a communication issue of, of what's available so that they can take advantage.
Yeah, we did. Michelle, maybe you can speak a little bit as to how we got word out on this, on both booster clinics and the testing facilities?
I'm actually going to let Art do that one.
Oh yeah, Art did that, that's right.
With our communications consultant.
Yes, you're right.
Well, thank you. Our primary means of communication were through our website, through Facebook and through the channels that our communication consult developed for us. And we use that, we use the, we use that process several times for both the testing site as well as the booster clinic.
And also, Joe, I've made the, I made all of the department heads aware of both the clinics. As, you know, as we were in the ramp up and once we knew the dates, we made everybody aware of that. And that includes folks like, like Lynn Harper over at the library so that, you know, she could notify her, her constituency as well as and perhaps most importantly, Jennifer Young down at the senior center to make sure that her constituency was made aware of, of both. I, I don't recall or don't believe we had a request for a ride to either clinic as of yet, but certainly are able and capable and standing ready to provide that service if needed.
So if someone needed a ride, to whom would they make that request so that they could respond?
Yep. So the, the, if they're a senior in town, they would make that request through the senior centers, ride ride coordination team. I forget what the, what the transportation coordinator, excuse me. That, that would be reachable through their website.
Yep. Okay. And so if there are folks listening or viewing this, if they have any questions, they should be able to contact our office who can direct them for appropriate transportation needs.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Are there any members of the public who have comments or questions on the COVID-19 report? Seeing none.
I see Lynn Anderson has her hand up, Joe.
I don't need, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. There we go. Lynn, please, if you could just give us your name and address and then ask your question.
Lynn Anderson, 8 Water Street. I have a very simple question. What is the definition of fully boost, fully vaccinated? Does it include a booster?
I love this town. That's a fantastic question. We ju- we just talked about this in the, in the walk into the meeting, Lynn. Michelle and I and Art, you're absolutely right. That, that definition has changed, I think, perhaps very recently by the CDC. I, I just wanted, I didn't change our, our statistics because I wanted to make sure of that before I do. But I believe either they're talking about or have formally changed the, the definition of fully vaccinated to include the two primary shots and a booster if you're outside of six months from either of those, from those primary shots. So that's a change in their definition, or at least they were talking about making that change. What I wasn't sure, Lynn, is if they had formally made that change yet, which is why I didn't change our statistics yet.
Okay, so the, the numbers you talked about today, when you said fully vaccinated, you meant just the two or the one?
The two prime, exactly. Yeah. But we will, we will be looking into that and obviously we'll, we'll represent more accurate data if that ends up being wrong.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great. Though I saw on the other hand, Lonnie?
Yes.
Lonnie Cutler, again, if you could just give us your name and address, please.
Yes, Lonnie Cutler, 86 Central Street, Lincoln School Apartments. I would love to see notification to every resident here. There are 60 units in this apartment building. And we love to get notification from whoever, Corcoran Management. If Corcoran Management could be told to send us this notification on the sites for the vaccinations and also the testing sites. And also I'm working with Amy Farrell, who's the Chair of the Board of the Lincoln School Managers, to try to get people to mask up here. They've been notified that they should wear their masks in this building and not everybody is complying. So I'd like it reinforced by the selectmen possibly and whoever will get them to mask up. Thank you.
Thank you. Now let me ask, would it be helpful if, if something was posted in the lobby?
I think everybody should get a notice from the rental manager sends up notices. And I think it should be put under the doors of every single apartments and Corcoran Management should do their job and do it.
We hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's been a delight for this meeting and I'm so glad about the Sustainable Director. I'm all for it. My biggest fear is climate change and then the pandemic. Thank you.
Any other comments? I see none. So then at this point, I do not believe we have nominations or appointments to advance this evening. So I would ask if there are members of the public who have comments that they would like to make on items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, I will now move to the Town Administrator Select Board Reports. And again, I'm going to start with Mr. Mayo.
Not tonight. Thank you, Joe.
Michelle?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Art?
It's been a full evening, Joe. I've got nothing to add. Thanks.
Yes, we, we are now moving into, we've concluded the three hours and now we're moving into the fourth hour of our meeting. Liz Klein?
No report tonight, but just to follow up on Ms. Cutler's comment, I'm meeting with Amy Farrell tomorrow morning. So I will follow up on that.
Great, thank you. Bill Ramsey?
Just briefly, I wanted to give a shout out to the DPW for their work last Friday with the storm. I know it wasn't a blockbuster storm, but I thought they did a great job. And the fact that the roads were cleared and safe by about noon last Friday was a, was a testament to the great work of the crew. So well done by our DPW and I'm sure they'll be busy this Monday as well. That's all I have.
So I'm just going to follow up on bills to, to give a shout out to the Ware River Water System. There was a water main break that occurred, I believe it was on Tuesday in the South Pleasant Street area. They were on top of it. It affected many homes and they dealt with it efficiently and promptly. So thanks to them as well. We have concluded our agenda. I thank everyone for their attention, time and really their commitment to this town. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
And Joe Fisher?
Aye.